Now, we should be able to get back with it here. Okay, this. Yeah, I'm not going to be able to monitor the attendees.
Bruce? Go, go, go. We're on? Evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting, November 3rd. November 3rd, 2021. Before we get into our agenda, I'll remind you about the public, anybody on Zoom especially, that we do have hybrid Zoom meeting going on here and webinar. And the link for it is on the Select Board Agenda that's in the Town of Camden website under Select Board. And it's practice for 11 through 21. There's instructions there for those who would rather connect by phone. It's to have an effect that option also. Respectfully request that anybody on Zoom, please try to utilize the Q and A function, please. If you have a question during the discussion or presentation, try to get to those questions, but no question is a matter of record unless it's addressed by the board. We will attempt to do that, of course. But I have to also manage the meeting, so please try to adhere to that. And the access to the meeting for person present in the room or on Zoom will be managed equally as is only fair. So with that, I'll ask some questions at the start of agenda. With the first item, as usual, are a public input on a non-agenda item. Do we have anybody here who'd like to address a non-agenda item? Not seeing any, we will move on to our approval of the board minutes from October 19th, 2021.
I have one question, one comment. On the approval of the minutes. On the approval of board minutes from October 5th, 2021, it says the non-motion to approve the minutes from October 5th, 2021, seconded. So she couldn't motion to end second. Motion passed 4 to 1. Fosiani abstained. Actually, Bob wasn't at the meeting, so he didn't abstain. He couldn't vote, so it should be a motion passed 4-0. And it's probably Ratner seconded. No discussion, so I just wanted to make those corrections.
There is one small correction added, one that I noticed where we talked about the Ray Williamson and his review of the canceled Sally Dayso agreement. It says, "As he actively selling the vessel," that's not true. He's actively promoting the vessel. So I just wanted to be clear on that. But other than that, any other comments?
No other comments? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 19th, 2021.
Thank you, Matt. A motion made in second any discussion. All's in favor. Sophie, I'll need a verbal from you.
Yes, I approve.
Sophie, can you hear me?
Yes, I approve. Can you hear me? Oh, I approve. Can you hear me?
We can't hear you, Sophie.
Yes, I'm a yes. Yep.
Sophie, just being on a video call, I'll need a verbal from you on the motion.
So you can't hear me at all, right?
I can hear you. I can see you. Yes, just give us a verbal yay or nay on the motion.
Yay.
Thank you, yay. For the board certification, I know Sophie is in many miles away. And tell us where, Sophie?
I'm in Dakar.
Dakar, which is.
West Africa.
Great. Well, thanks for joining us because Sophie has a relative schedule. May do some movement around of some of the items, and not least of which I would recommend that we hold on public hearings and move a motion to leave the Select Board meeting and join as wastewater commissioners so we can have a discussion about the the status of our pumps. The wastewater treatment.
So I'll second that.
Okay, good. All's in favor? Sophie?
I.
Okay. So as wastewater commissioners, we would like to, let me just get to the right place. Yeah, the presentation by Wright Pierce regarding the update status of the plant upgrade.
So just a correction. This is going to be, the presentation will be more about the INI study. They have, they're able to answer questions about the project.
Actually makes more sense because in the last Select Board meeting, per the notes, we were going to address INI at this session. So thank you very much for reminding us of that.
That was my mistake.
Mr. Kevin, would you please? Yes, it's your phone.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Obrich, Wright Pierce Engineers. I'm the project manager for Camden Projects. Also with me, Matt Burns. He's the lead project engineer on the treatment plant upgrade projects. If there are questions on that, also, one of us should be able to answer. We prepared a quick, brief presentation on infiltration and inflow investigations that have been done in the past and where things are headed. So it's kind of an educational, general discussion and then some specifics on the mightings that were found. First, what is II? II is a term for infiltration and inflow. Infiltration is groundwater that enters the sewer system through leaky pipes, manholes. Typically, the highest in spring in the groundwater level is at highest. Inflow is stormwater that enters the sewer system through direct connections such as catch basins, yard drains, some pumps, those sorts of things. Flow is in the sewer, it's very quickly during rain events through inflow sources. We'll need a chart that we'll talk about a little later in the presentation. So here's a graphic, typical sources of IA. The green boxes are inflow sources. So we have roof drain connections, uncapped flings, in basements, some pumps, salty manhole covers and frames, direct connections from storm drains, catch basins, those sorts of things. And the blue are infiltration sources. So that's typically broken pipes, faulty pipes, cracks. Foundation drains, where the groundwater gets in. So that's kind of a graphic of, you can see on the left where the green water is down. There's a sanitary sewer. On the right, it's storm water. So those are two different pipes. And the road, typically, they're not connected to each other, but sometimes they can be. So we tend to have a little general discussion about how to quantify and find infiltration and inflow. One of the tools is putting in flow meters in the sewers. So there's a nice picture of a sewer pipe with a flow meter assembly installed in it to help measure the flow. So these are portable flow meters. You can move around throughout the system. The town owns a fleet of four currently. And they've been put in the past and they'll be used again moving forward. And what you're doing is looking at the flow changes during the day during rain events and non-rain events to see how much impact the rain has. So it helps you identify areas with higher IA rates. So here's that graph again. And this is an actual flow meter graph from a meter that was put in on C Street here in Camden. And the red line shows you the flow rate. That's a million gallons a day. You can see the blue lines indicate rain events. Those are daily totals. So you can see during those pretty large rain events, 1.64 inches of rain and 1.09. You can see how quickly the flow rate increases during the rain. And then after the rain event, it takes a little longer, maybe a day or two to get back down to normal. That sometimes is as the water moves down through the sewer profile, it hits cracks and mikes and have more infiltration effects. Quick spike is an inflow indicator. And then sanitary sewer, those SSOs as they're called in Camden, those occur only during rain events due to inflow. Those shock increases during the rain event. Once the rain stops, it tends to stop. So use flow meters to try to figure out where you really want to go look for sources of inflow. Some of the tools we use to find those sources, one is called smoke testing. So in the picture, on the ground in between the cones is a sewer manhole. The cover's been removed and there's a blower put on top. And you don't see the little container up there that has what we call liquid smoke that gets pumped in. So they blow smoke into the sewer and you look for places where the smoke by color to indicate where water could enter the system. Things like catch basins and yard drains and that sort of stuff. So inflow that comes in from catch basins and in the roadways or in public railways called public is also private inflow. That's what enters through digital offices, basins, some pumps, basement drains, those sorts of things. So we did a bunch of smoke testing in Camden. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But here's an indication. So here, this was a driveway drain in the town. It was smoke testing. Smoke came out that indicated probably tied to the sewer. We confirmed that with dye testing that we talked about. And there were several drains like this on that property tied directly to the sewer. So when the rain hits, goes down into that and goes into the sewer. That property owner worked with the town to remove those drains from the sewer system and they redirected it to the storm drain where it should be. So that's a, gives you an indication if you find it and then you work it privately off the owners to get it out of the sewer system. Dye testing. So after you smoke tested it sometime before, if you want to see what types of things are connected to the sewer, one way to do it is put water in those sources, a catch basin, for example, with a dye tablet in it. It dyes the water, in this case, it's red. And then you look in manholes to see where that water is coming. Is it coming into the sewer system through a manhole? Is it staying in the storm drain? You find it downstream in the storm drain? Dye testing is a way to confirm if sources are connected to the sewer.
No, I just realized that on YouTube, it's because I'm having to do this and live stream, it's not showing the, it's not showing this on YouTube. But Bruce, you're recording this, right? So we'll just upload that version. For anybody that's listening on YouTube and frustrated that you can't see this, it will be a different version. We'll be uploading it tomorrow.
Okay, so other ways to find private IA, private inflow. Roof leaders on buildings such as this building, where you have a big giant black roof that collects a lot of water during rain events. If those roof drains are tied to the sewer, it's a, it could be a big source of inflow. So one of the ways you look for that is using dye testing up there and you can get water up on the roof. One way we've done it in the past is fire drops with hose and you add water to the roof, put the dye in and see where it comes out. Does it come out of the sewer? Does it come out of the storm drain? Does it come out of the sidewalk? Other way to find private IA inflow is through house inspections. You go in every house, you look for some pump cell drains in the town with a comprehensive house inspection program. We've talked about it in a couple of slides. So that's a general background about how to find it, tools you use. And we'll talk about some of the specific projects in Camden that have been done in the past. So in 2012, we looked in the service area of the C Street Pump Station, which is in the yard across the harbor from the main docks, the main pump station. And that's shown in that red yellow line up there. That's the service area. And the roof one running kind of horizontally through the wall. So C Street Pump Station is one of the locations where the SSOs have been reported in the past. So essentially, the water coming into the pump station exceeds the capacity of the pump station. Builds up in the wet well and builds up in the mobile pool pipe and into the house. So that was the first place we started looking. We conducted flow monitoring. That was that graph that you had seen earlier, was done as part of that project. We did smoke testing and dye testing. Although some catch basins did have some smoke coming in. When we did the dye testing, we found that all the water stayed in the storm drain system and didn't actually enter the sewer, so it's likely the smoke came through some old connection that had been blocked and they just dried out. Didn't find, as we like to call it, the business, any smoking guns of any high IA sources that were easily removed. So one of the things you can do at C Street Pump Station is increase the pumping capacity. That'll help contain the water while they're in storm and capture certain storm events and you have to pump it to the treatment plant for treatment. So after that study, this was one of the pump stations that we helped town upgrade. So just to give you an idea of pumping rate, prior to the upgrade, each pump, there are two pumps in the system. Each pump had a capacity of 250 gallons per minute. After the upgrade, by upgrading the pumps and motor sizes, we were able to get up to about 600 gallons per minute. We're currently working on a project to replace the force main for this pump station. Currently, it goes under the harbor and it's been there for probably about 60 years. And there's been a couple of times of dredging. So we're going to remove that pipe from under the harbor and run it around the harbor cross-country and over to Atlantic Avenue and then tie it to the gravity sewer system over on Main Street. Once that is completed, that would be a larger pipe and expect the pumping rates to increase to about 800 gallons per minute. So that's almost a waterfall increases pumping capacity. That's good for C Street Pump Station. It can now handle more flow during rain event. But all that water gets pumped to Baby Pump Station, which is another location of the SSO. So obviously, you need to continue to try to find more IA to take out, you know, just transferring the issue over there.
All of the C Street stuff goes to the Baby Street Pump Station?
Yes, the force main pumps. The discharge of the force main from C Street dumps into the manhole just outside the Baby Pump Station. The Baby Pump Station pumps it up to the treatment plant for treatment.
Has it ever been considered to just run a force main all the way up?
It would take a significantly different pumping system. There's about 100-foot elevation difference from Baby Pump Station up to the treatment plant. This one has, this station has very little, what we call static head elevation difference. If you wanted to pump directly up to the treatment plant, you'd have to lay a new pipe model there. Probably go from 1500 pound meters, I think, in there. Probably 15 to 75, 100, which probably more than you get that directly to the treatment.
Right. I'm just wondering if we have to choose between trying to get INI out of the Baby Street, you know, reducing the infiltration of Baby Street enough that it can accommodate this. It almost feels like it's never going to happen and that may be a.
We have that. We've done within, been able to do something like that in other communities where pump stations are located where you can pump them directly to the treatment plant without significant changes in the pumping system and that strategy has been used elsewhere. But because of the elevation difference here, it's very difficult. And the length of pipe required to get all the way to the plant would be like, big cost.
It's probably pretty costly to find all of our inflow too. All right, thanks.
Then after that study was done, we moved over to the service area of the Baby Pump Station, which is a good chunk of the downtown. You can see those different colored areas or different drainage areas where we had put flow meters down at the base to try to identify areas that may have more IA than others. After we did flow testing, we did large area of smoke testing in that area too, and to the right of it, we smoke tested almost all of that. And for example, that's where that driveway drain, that's how that was found in this project during the smoke testing. So we found several other inflow sources here that have been removed from the sewer system by the town and by property. At that time, we also started helping the town with the beginnings of the house inspection program. That started back about 115 and 116. After that area, we moved over to the other side of town or that side of Route 1 and did the same sort of thing, flow metering, a bunch more smoke testing and dye testing. We again found more sources of inflow and they've all been corrected that they're able to. That was 2016, 2017. We talked about the house inspection program and you can see by this graph, this, every one of those docks are houses of the town. So 1,587 have been inspected. Of that, 127 were called illicit connections, or some pumps are for cellar drains that are tied directly to the sewer sewer service leading the building. Those were identified during that process. And since that time, 111 of those have been corrected by the property owners for the system. There's more to do. There's still some more houses to get into. And pandemic obviously interrupted a lot of this program, but people didn't want anybody to walk into their house. So they plan to start that up again and go back and reach out to the people where they found these connections that need to come out and work with that and get those.
I thought that we had completed the houses and that there were only four or something that I confused. And I didn't realize there were so many known locations that we just hadn't, is that people that haven't said yes or?
I don't know how many, how many are left a week to do for repairs?
No.
Or just due to inspections?
Inspections.
Oh, how many inspections are left?
Yes.
Don't have that all felt in my head. There aren't very many.
Probably, have we talked in tens or talking singles?
Probably a couple dozen at the most.
And that was from that list that we had before? Because you made that big effort to sort of get to the end of this and then there was some legal action.
On form.
Yeah, and the problems with the rest of them is finding the owner. So they profit exchange hands and it's sometimes very hard to track down the owner.
So I thought those people were already on that list before. It'd be good to have them updated. I didn't realize there were so many left.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Then why was there only legal action against four?
That was individuals refused on trade.
Okay, whereas some even served. Okay, we never looped back around to the people that maybe have been axed out.
The inspection letters got to them, but they didn't get us to allow us to do entry.
Right.
And the commercial. The ones that are left are, we can't find, we haven't been able to find the owners. And of course, once COVID hit, we suspended. It would be all done by now if it hadn't been COVID.
And when you say houses, does that include commercial buildings or is that a whole different category that's going to be talked about also?
I don't think there's any commercial buildings we haven't been in.
With that number, I guess this includes all.
Yes.
I just want to mention, there are a lot of people in the room that may not understand the importance here and may be watching what this is about. There's a storm system and there's a sewer system. And when storm water goes into the wrong system, goes into the sewer system, it can overload the wastewater plant with water that doesn't need to be cleaned. And that's, that's what we're doing here is taking out the sources that don't need to go in the sewer system so it doesn't overload the plant. So it's a very important issue. So that's what this is all about for there.
Yeah, more about overloading the pump stations because those are the one, or the manholes. That's when you see the, the big geysers come, probably a lot of them saw it in the last storm. The geysers coming out from the sewer manhole covers. That literally means that so much water has gotten in there that we now have raw sewage in the streets.
Yeah, current building codes don't allow you to connect some pumps and cellar drains into the sewer system. In fact, some of these homes are 100 years old and there was no treatment plant. There were pipes that brought the water into the harbor and sewage, drainage, everything went in the same pipes to the harbor. So on private property, it's hard, you have to identify the, try to separate them. It's been separated in the streets. Public part of it is all been separated, but there's a lot of that still in older homes that are still tied into the sewer because that's where they always went in the past and they just haven't been separated. And that's not unusual. That's very common in the old sections and what happens. Well, this one, so this is a some pump, a picture of some pump. So these private IA sources, so the town, this is how they kind of did the responsibilities. The town was going into houses that did the inspections to locate the sources and inform that the homeowners that these need to come out. They're consistent with these homeowners and trying to figure out strategies to, do you just run a pipe out the window or up the basement wall on your property and have the some pump discharge there? Is there a storm drain nearby connected with first source to things? And then the responsibility of homeowner is to make those, make those repairs and disconnect it from the sewer system and to verify that with the town. Other ways to look for IA, the town's been doing is a closed circuit TV inspection of the sewers. So the picture on the left, that, that is not a picture of a sewer in Camden. That's just a kind of a stop on. That, that shows a TV camera that travels through the sewer system and things you're looking for, cracked pipes or sewers, that's a service level coming in on the left. Oftentimes, if there's a some pump connected or drains, you'll see a bunch of clean water, clear water running through those. And that helps identify which properties to go, to go look for. Some of these have perimeter drains on the outside of the houses. Those are very difficult to find. Obviously, it's all underground. They connect to the sewer service outside the building, so you can't identify an active connection. So very difficult to find those. But if you can see that, can see that something's happening on that property, it kind of gives you the chance to maybe do a little deeper investigation. So they've used these TV cameras and they have successfully found some old abandoned pipes that were contributing a bunch of water and they were able to plug those off, either inside the pipe or outside. They've also contacted with Ted Berry Company and they have what they call a lateral sewer inspection that they can bring this thing over to a sewer lateral, maybe push another camera up into the sewer lateral to go back onto private property to see if there are other connections outside the house. I don't believe they've found any in what the area that it's been done. That is one way to look to see if there are outside perimeter drains that are connected. So what did we learn today? Well, the flow metering, unfortunately, you like to think that you're going to find one or two streets where it's just a bunch of water coming in and then you go address those streets. What we found is this problem of IA, if the system is spread out through the old parts of that, which again, is not unusual for old sewer systems in the state. So it makes it a little more difficult to find those sources and find ways to get them out. Again, several, several abandoned pipes that contribute a significant amount of water have been disconnected and plugged. And the house inspection program, one of the more aggressive house inspection programs that I've seen in my career. So the town's done a really good job, spent a lot of time, which it takes a lot of time to get into these houses. And they've been able to find, you know, once some pumps have been removed from the sewer. So improvements being made, but it's still, still work to be done. So what's next? I guess we're assisting the town. We were talking this afternoon about getting your flow meter back in to do some more flow metering. Concerning some smoke testing and dye testing in the downtown area, a little bit of some roof drains. Some of the larger buildings, again, those are a little more difficult to track down. And but that's one of the next steps. We're going to continue to finish up those few house inspections and follow up with some of those homeowners that are going to remove some sources and make sure those actually come out. They're going to continue CCTV and look for other sources that might be able to be repaired. And ultimately, you like to try to identify some construction projects, address larger areas. We've had some towns where we've identified certain streets where everybody's connected and the only way to do it is to run new sewer and storm drain up to pipe and make them connect to the high pipe. And unfortunately, like I said, yours seems to be more spread out, so it's a little more difficult to nail those down. I think that's it. So that was a brief overview, so.
In summary, you know, your very first chart showed those traumatic spikes in flow, which is caused by infiltration. Inflow.
Inflow. Inflow. Infiltration comes in, it's more of a steady rate over a longer period.
But it's an order of magnitude bigger.
It can be in certain areas of that.
Yes. Which of the investigations will help us to attack that much higher? Yes, which of the investigations will help us to attack that much higher per magnitude problem?
That, that, I mean, the smoke testing we've done, we did identify some sources. We didn't find any public catch basins that were, that were directly connected so far. There may have been some indirect connections, but anyone with that smoke and dye tested dials, all that water stayed in the storm drain system, so. We expect a lot of it to do on the private side, which again, is not unusual, it's. Could be some other under drains around the house that are connected and that sort of stuff.
Sure.
Or other yard drains that didn't smoke, if any of these connections have a trap or any type of low point in the line where water collects, the smoke can't get back up through it. You, you won't see it come out the source, so it takes, it's a lot of legwork by the, the towns, put in a lot of time, we helped them and.
Good. Any other questions?
Um, yeah, so. A little bit of this sounds like kind of more of the same to me, like. When we get the letters from the DP that say, you know, just, just by the numbers, Camden continues to dump millions of gallons of unfreated sewage into the harbor. And we say, oh, look at all this that we did, we went around, we checked everybody's basements and they say, well, that's, that's lovely, but it hasn't created a, like a meaningful measurable decrease.
But, well, yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's definitely helped, I don't know what the numbers show from year to year. Again, different years, different storm events, it's hard to compare one year to one next, so it would obviously. Without the work that's been done, I think would have been worse still.
Right, probably.
Yeah.
But it's still, at the end of all of this, is there, what are we gonna have to hold in our hands? Is there gonna be a report that says, you know, these are all of the, you know, of however many feet or miles of pipe. This amount is known to be in excellent condition, this amount is.
They've been collecting data on the conditions of the pipes as well, a lot of these pipes are old pipes and. You can replace the pipes in the roadway, that'll help with the infiltration. It's also possible it wouldn't solve the problem and most of the problems on private property for roof drains and those types of things. So we really need to get a better handle on roof drains, especially some of the larger buildings downtown and see if those are contributing how, how to get them out.
Now, what about, is there, is there anything that we're gonna do to inspect laterals?
They have done some, I don't know how many, we do today? Two streets or, yeah, you know, and I guess it's what we've been doing that, well, to see if there were perimeter drains tied in. Once you find them, then you have to figure out how to separate them. If there's a storm drain nearby, let's deep it up where you can run the pipe there instead of the sewer.
Right, I mean, we have so many laterals that are, and laterals for anybody that doesn't know is the part that connects from the house to the, you know, to the main pipe in the road. And usually, you know, one of the ways people find out is that their, their system backs up and they can't flush their toilet. That's if somebody's blocking it, if it's in a place where it's like just really able to flow. Then they don't, they're not gonna notice any problem necessarily.
The homeowner wouldn't notice that there's a problem once it backs out, if you're right.
Right, and so there are all these places where we could just have sewage going into the. And we have no way of knowing the general condition of, of laterals in the town.
You might not.
Or how much of the problem that could be.
Kevin, your point about sag, that occurs laterals also.
Yes.
It's very common, and so you know, the smoke test is not gonna work on a sagging lateral.
No.
And then the homeowner's not gonna see it, we're not gonna. Especially in older areas, older laterals, that's very, very common.
I think they plan to do more of these inspections on the lateral, TV cameras. You can, they were able to get up pretty far into the laterals, depending on the number of bends in the lateral and stuff, sometimes it makes it difficult to get the camera. You might be able to do something in the house as well, if you can get access to the pipe and, and along the other direction.
So they are gonna do, what part are you gonna do?
We, we've been helping Dave any way they want, we help them put flow meters in, we help them do smoke testing, we've written some reports on our findings for the past studies.
So what, what's the amount that we put in the budget for this? It's supposed to be an additional $40,000 or something for a comprehensive?
Well, it's the next, it's the next steps, yes, and we've been talking about this afternoon about getting flow meters in and trying to arrange the time to do the smoke testing downtown and digesting the roof drains. If you wanna do it, call summer traffic officer. But maybe do some of that over the winter, the inspections up in the roofs. The mechanics to see where some of those are, but they've been.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they do a lot, but my sense is that they already have a lot to do and that. If, I just want to make sure we're being honest with ourselves about what can be accomplished here. Because just pointing out some more things for them to do, I guess I'm having trouble seeing the value in that when.
Yeah, and we, Kevin, will you have a, will you have a, a program plan for the next months in writing?
Yeah.
Or a layout so that we can take a look at what the, we understand this is.
Yeah, we can, we can pull that together for you, you're talking about strategy this afternoon before this meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's document some of that and let's take a look at it, because it is, it's frustrating and slow because I still believe the infill thing is so huge that, that's a tough one to navigate down, especially in this time span.
It was easy to find.
Exactly, especially a, a smoking gun.
Yes, and really what right fears can be worse too is when we need more personnel, they can provide it.
Yeah, we can provide as many people as we want to come up and help.
And maybe it's just a, just a program plan, that might be helpful, so we can see.
Okay.
And, and rather than, we can talk about it in terms of, but at the end of the day, it's, it's gonna take a lot of effort.
Yes.
And one, one block at a time, but I think a program plan would be great, trust the C. So we have an idea of what magnitude of investigation is ongoing, we, we can't put our finger on that, we shouldn't, you know, you guys do.
And then one other note, the, the red you saw on the.
Yes.
I'm gonna send letters out this winter, let people know that they have to fix those. I think by now, we're kind of coming out of COVID and they can have plumbers come into their house and fix their issues.
Sure.
And if I do that now, then they'll be able to line up plumbers before they get busy or something.
That's an element I would expect to see in the future.
Yeah, but that's gotta be a tiny part of it, that's just, you know, we're focusing so much on the private properties and what, you know, each resident can do. But I don't think we have a really good, or I know that I don't have an understanding and don't know of anywhere I can go to read. A full assessment of all of our public infrastructure and how that. May or may not be contributing, and, you know, we had those reports in 2011 and 2012 that gave a, a good overview of like, this is where we are, this is what we know, this is what we don't know. But I haven't seen anything in writing since then that really updates that, it's always a question of going to that 2012 report and then mentioning something. And then I hear, and, and Dave says, oh, yeah, we took care of that, but we, so I can see there's a lot that's been done, but I can't find anywhere that's documented.
Right, we do, we'll work on that.
That'd be great, that'd be great, we can bring it to that and we can have some discussions about what the short range program is and considerations for longer range, because Kim will be down in the morning.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pull together a, a copy of the report and.
Right.
I guess I'm just a little concerned about, we know that you have a huge workload right now and so part of the idea of putting extra money in the budget was to make sure that. Hopefully that somebody else could come in and take over some of this so that you, I mean, you just have so much to do. So if you need more, then just speak up and say what we really need is another employee.
I mean, because.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that very well may be the case, but I, this is not something that we're gonna fix within two years. It's gonna be ongoing for quite a while and one of the major goals of the upgrades and the treatment plant is to automate it more. So that personnel that we have that are currently working as operators can move over and do more of the work on the collection system, like what we're talking about now.
The infrastructure, yeah, I'd agree.
But I mean, but there's such a huge amount of sewage just going right into the, you see the yacht club? I mean, places are getting flooded not with rainwater, but with sewer water, there are tampons in parking lots and I don't, I think it's pretty severe problem that we should. And that's why I was saying, maybe, maybe we just need to look at pumping everything directly to the plant. If we know that this really, it's gonna be the next 10 years before we can really get the Bayview Street pump station to be able to handle everything and that's what's realistic. Then maybe we need to look at getting the sewage to the treatment plant another way.
Yeah, we're hope, we're hoping to eliminate it and so we don't have to put that much money into the infrastructure. But other communities have had to do things like that.
Absolutely.
Or, or put an underground tank in, Portland right now was spending millions on underground tanks.
Search tanks.
They put, they put the sewage in those tanks and then once the storm is over, they feed it back to the treatment plant.
The search network.
When it can handle it. So there's, there's other ways to do it, but right now, we haven't given up on the more cost effective than officially do it.
Right, I just, it would be nice to know sort of the likelihood of success, like, are we just doing this to be able to tell the DP that we're trying and we know it's gonna fail?
Oh, no. Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna happen as quickly as we would like to see it happen.
This stuff doesn't happen quickly, it's just takes years, because how many, how many hundred years it takes to get to this place, this position, this is not new.
That's why we really wanted to store it in a tank.
Well, we can evaluate surge tanks, but I think the point is, I guess, you're also saying it's true, is that if we're gonna, forget how much we're gonna spend, spend some money to try to improve. Is that improvement 1% or 10%? And we have no feel for that, that's right, that's what the program plan hopes to accomplish, elimination of something objective. Because you're right, I think it's gonna be, it's, it's multi-years, not two years, it's longer than that. Any other questions from the board that they generally have in here? Sophie, you have any questions? No?
No, no, I, I followed the conversation, it was excellent, I, I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation though.
Sorry about that, Sophie.
No, no problem, thank you guys, thank you very much, thanks, Kevin, thanks for coming.
Yes, yes, we're sorry, it's because I'm having to live screen from my computer as well and it'll be up tomorrow.
Thank you, Allison. I just want to ask a quick question, put it back on the agenda. We have three licenses on the public hearings list for liquor licenses, anybody here, here to speak to any one of those three licenses? Please raise your hand.
Did we adjourn as wastewater commissioners?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, we will.
I'll make a motion to adjourn as wastewater and reconvene this floor.
And second, all's in favor, Sophie?
Hey, yes.
Okay, back to my, my, I didn't see any hands raised for anybody who wanted to address them, so what I'm gonna do is. Address the public hearing of the three licenses and get a couple of administrative things out of the way, it shouldn't take minutes. We have typically the mode of the public hearing is we open the, the discussion with anybody from the public who would like to speak to the issue for and against or just speak to the license. In this case, it's three, but since there is none, I'll be closed of the public hearing portion and, and revert to select for deliberation on these three matters at hand. Which are the application of Bayview Street and 16 Bayview for a class one liquor license. Application of Franny's Bistro, 65 Chestnut for a class one restaurant liquor license. And finally, application of North Winds Waterfront Restaurant at 48 Bayview for a renewal restaurant class one liquor license. We can take these as a batch or we can discuss individually, board, it's a discretion of the board members.
I think I, I'd like to make a motion to, to the mall simultaneously, one thing I noticed in the applications. The North Winds application waterfront restaurant, it's one of the first applications that I've seen where. The chief of police actually mentioned that there had been some situations there, but it was not such that he still recommended. Granted the license, but it was interesting to see that it was spelled out properly. Notice that, so unless anybody has objections, I make a motion that we approve the application of Bayview Street in LLC DBA 16 Bayviews. Bayview at 16 Bayview Street for renewal hotel class one liquor license. We renew the application of Franny's Bistro LLC DBA, Franny's Bistro 55 Chestnut Street for renewal restaurant liquor license. And renew the application of North Winds Inc. DBA, the waterfront restaurant at 48 Bayview Street for renewal restaurant class one liquor license.
A second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Sophie raising hands too quickly. Any, no discussion, all's in favor? Verbal, Sophie?
Yes.
Great, these items are, are approved. Secondly, did we have a consent agenda of three items somewhere, I'm suspecting there could be, well, there is one we find out. We have approval of first item, approval of renewal lodging and different license to 16 Bayview Camden Windward House, Franny's Bistro, the Owl and Turtle Bookshop Cafe. Secondly, approval of the application for a taxicab business license and taxicab operator for Susan Craft doing business as craft delivery service. And lastly, the approval of the name to be added to the, to the village agreement honor roll that specifically is in honor of Zach Herrick. Are there any objections to these items on the consent agenda? They hereby adopt it, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the town's action items and again, given Sophie's. Schedule, I'm going to make a slight modification and move the discussion on the action on the citizen petitions to regarding the Montgomery Dam and their requests. In, in terms of just our intro, this, and I'll probably please feel free to eject, but. Just in the broader view, as everybody knows, we're involved in the river feasibility study, which was finalized some, we started four years ago, right?
Was it finalized or when did it begin?
No, no, finalized this year, but it was, we started working on this whole activity back about three or four years. And I, I just want to start upfront with the same, before we get to the action on the petitions. We, this, this board, I know, is, is committed to pursuing the, the recommendations of that report. Which was finally published, I believe, in August, almost during that time period, this is the 271 page report. And specifically the recommendations that are well summarized in the, in the executive summary. I say that because what we really have here is, is two petitions that are, well, they're, they're diametrically opposed obviously. One is to really, to go back, the select board has in the town have been actively involved in that pursuit of those recommendations of that report. Yes, including the Montgomery Dam, they're still in the process, this process is gonna take a while, it's taking longer than we would like to, but. One of the petitions specifically really reinforces, you know, going, going through this process of reviewing, pursuing the recommendations of for putting flesh on the bone as a part. The other one is for intent purpose, honestly, it's trying to circumvent that process by not allowing that process to go forward. The process will go forward from the perspective of the board, regardless of what happens with petitions or not, but this is not the point of this action. And the action I'm here is to the board to. To, well, basically it's set to reject the petitions, if they're rejected, obviously the petitions go to get, you know, the required number of signatures, valid signatures for. Putting it on the, potentially the June ballot or possibly a special town meeting where many regulations were in there going. And I always would encourage the petitioners to, if they haven't already, to talk to order and or a town clerk regarding the process and procedures to do it correctly, so you don't have a glitch in the works. One of the key elements here in terms of both petitioners, the, these petitions are really a bit. Early in, in the sense, because we really won't be looking at actual warrant until probably next, end of the first quarter of next year. For anticipation of the June ballot or it's looking at the ballot issue. One of, one of the key things is, you know, we have two petitions here, we don't even know if there could be more. That's fundamentally what could happen and we really can't make an effective decision on what's gonna go to warrant, not knowing what the other elements may be. Not the least of which is we have two petitions that are diametrically opposed, but, so the board really is, is in a position where it has. really is uh is in a position where it has to make a decision uh fundamental decision on these positions tonight. Uh, without a decision to, for example, reject these petitions, they well, it wouldn't go to the signature mode, um, but they're obviously able to approve, it would approve in the warrant and and well well in advance of the timing of the onset. So with that, um, I'm certainly willing to listen to petitioners.
We can't hear you out here.
You can't hear me now?
No.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hello?
I can hear you, I can hear you very well.
Yeah, I know you can, but I'm wondering why we're not projecting over uh, I can't, I can't put it any closer to my mouth, I'll swallow it.
Is it just, can you hear, can you hear me or? Yeah, we can hear you.
Is it a mic?
We can always.
Well, I think.
I was gonna say, hello?
I was actually thinking, I was actually thinking, Bob, that that you were coming, you were coming through very loud and clear tonight.
Well, you're a different situation.
Is this any better?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna stand over. Probably said, no, seriously, I I was just trying to summarize um the mutually opposed uh 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 petitions that are that we need to address tonight as a board. Um, and that the diametrically opposed, obviously, one is substantially supporting the board doing what it's doing and will continue to do in terms of the pursuit of the recommendations of the feasibility, river restoration feasibility report. Um, that's not gonna stop for any reason, we're, we'd like to move a little faster if we could, but um, we we have to do our due diligence, that's that's the process we have applied and will apply to every one of the forty some priorities that this board has established for evaluation for the benefit of the taxpayers, so that they can at whatever point in time make their, the legislative body is you, the voters. And you're the one in the day, we do the homework, you make the decisions, that's the process we're gonna stay on, but Allison stated that um the these petitions are uh on term, in terms of our process, in terms of election next year or whatever. They're a little bit premature and 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 the main reason I say that is because uh you don't know uh, two weeks ago, I didn't know there was gonna be a second petition uh that's come to light and it could be more. And we can't make decisions about, you know, uh, X number of petitions until they're actually validated by a signature of voters. And so that's why I'm saying this for the benefit of the public and also benefit of the board, we understand that our decision here tonight is to accept or reject the petitions, if we reject those petitions before to go on the warrant for June, then those petitioners have the the right and the um to go out and get the proper forms from the town board to get to raised and the mer signature required uh for getting in on the ballot next June or optionally going to a special town meeting. So that's just a preface, that's all. And board have any questions?
Well, I I'm gonna say a couple of things. I think it is premature for both both petitions, uh, I think we should either postpone or uh the decision on both petitions, um, because I think they're both premature. Uh, one of the things that was brought up last week by Bernice, who was part of the Save the Dam Committee, was asking for meeting at the Opera House where we could have all of the scientists, you got the select board up on the board and then people can come and ask questions, it'd be safety, there'd be uh enough seats for everybody, and so I talked to uh, I think that's something we should actually absolutely do is schedule a workshop, ask for questions from the public, so that all of the questions, we can start from square one, you know, how many dams are there? Um, what what dams, what does each dam do for the town? Um, go through the whole process and then, you know, go through the science, have the scientists explain the reports so that everybody gets to see it, it will be recorded, so everybody can do it afterwards and everybody will be able to a- ask the questions they wanna ask with everybody else hearing, I think we should schedule that, I think we should uh get the information out there, I think. You know, I can say that I don't think the select board has done a very good job providing the information the town wants, I get that question all the time. I think the first step is is let's have a serious workshop uh at the Opera House with all the scientists, um, people can submit questions, they'll be able to ask questions from the audience and so everybody will be able to hear everything and ask every question they want, but uh, a lot of comments back from people that went to the workshop on the at the landing at the park and some people loved it because they could ask individual questions, but a lot of people didn't get a chance to get the information they wanted. Um, it worked for some, it didn't work for many. Um, so um, that's my suggestion, if you go to workshop at the Opera House, so everybody can get all the information they want and after that, you can start to make some decisions.
And uh, one second, one second, Karen. Um, any other comments with board before I get to all the comments, Mark?
Matt, you look like you're ready to say something. No, I'm just in in keeping, um, trying to see if there's the option for the petitioners to withdraw. I'm looking through to see at this point, without having to make it a uh conflict or contentious situation. A voluntary withdrawal apparently is an option uh for both of these. So again, just to the the public as well, uh, if you do want to have this as being a balanced uh opportunity for us to do our due diligence, which I am uh certainly that is my goal, is to learn as much as possible about all of this. Because again, I'm new to this particular board and I would like to learn and hear, um, as Mark mentioned, from the experts uh to hear questions from the community, uh, before I am put in a position to either accept or reject petitions for support or whatever. So again, I would just put it out there, um, this idea that the opportunity to withdraw these petitions, thank you.
Okay, um, Allison, do you want to use some else in?
You know, I think, did we determine, can you hear me okay? I don't think it was the microphones, but but you never know. Um, so, I mean, what I have heard a lot from people is, I think, the exact feeling that many of us have, that it's not, we're not ready to put anything out to voters, I think there are some people in the community that already know that they might, you know, they've already looked into it quite a bit and they have a position that they sort of know what they would want to change or if they don't want to change. Um, you know, there's some people that know that they don't want anything to change with the Montgomery Dam and they've they've done a bunch of research and they have their position. And there are other people that maybe have the have done a bunch of research and have the opposite opinion. But I really believe that the vast majority of Camden residents are somewhere in the middle and just trying to make sense of it. Um, we are at, in in my opinion, in the beginning of a conversation and not the end of it. Um, I hear that, you know, some people are worried that the select board um may have already made a decision, what we have is a bunch of information about something with broad recommendations based on some goals and objectives that are set, that were set, and I think I have a really strong feeling that the majority of the community does support the goals and objectives that were laid out in that feasibility study, they include aesthetic appeal, historic preservation, climate change adaptation, broad things that we know that most of the community agrees with. What I think that the majority of residents haven't had time to process whether or not they um understand the connection between those goals and objectives and the recommendations that were laid out in the report and we're in different places with that, so the only way that anything can change, for instance, with the Montgomery Dam is if we put something, we get to the point where we as a group agree that something is ready for voters, the library board of trustees, a majority of them also would have to agree that something is ready for voters. And then there would be something for people, we would say, this is gonna be the Warren article and this is the, these are the proposed changes. And then that's when everybody comes and says, we don't like what you're proposing, we don't think you should put it out to voters. And then we, or they say, yes, do it, let's, you know, put it out to voters, and then with that experience, we gauge whether we all continue to feel comfortable with it and then it gets voted on. So I think that a lot of people resent being asked to make up their mind right now to have an opinion, I kind of see it as our job as a select board to gauge when the community is ready to vote on something and we are not at the point where we are proposing anything, there are a lot of details to be worked out, so um I just wanted everybody to hear that, that there isn't there isn't even the note agreement exactly on all the design elements of something or the financing practice of something that could be put out to voters, so um you know, if we wanna, if you want everybody to vote on supporting something or not supporting something, I I just think that might further muddy the waters with the community and that we should continue to go through the process. If the select board gets to the point where we think, oh, the community is ready, we've made up our mind and we wanna put something out and you disagree with that, um, then then by all means, say, don't, don't do it then. If people think that we're going too slow, if it gets, you know, we do rounds and rounds of public information in different ways, um, we do need to do it in different ways. We tried one way, we did another, we're gonna put what stuff on the website, it takes a really long time for this kind of thing to happen, so um, some people are gonna think we're moving a little too fast and some people too slow, but we're not even at the point where we've decided anything at all, other than that, you know, we agree with pursuing um you know, the recommendations from the study in terms of evaluating, you know.
And by the way, pardon my, in an intro, hope you can hear me, intro was really because we do have two new members of the select board and they've only been on Mac and Sophie's been on for four months, so it has been a lot of history here since about two thousand seventeen of 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 this process, so I think that's part of the reason for that and also public education, but Karen, you had to hand up first.
Yeah.
Or should I say, Ms. Grove?
All right, first of all, Mark, thank you.
Intro, please, Karen.
My name is Karen Grove, I'm a resident of town of Cameron, I want to thank Mark for your suggestion, I think that is an excellent suggestion that we have numerous public hearings in open environments for people to come and and talk and discuss, you know. Uh, what I don't agree with is the idea that we are asking the select board to put anything forward. We're not. We're asking for you to say yes or no to the request of the petition and that's all we're asking, so this is.
Understood, understood, just talking away, forget it.
Thank you.
Um, please, get to the right to my graduate.
Well, she's coming up, I just wanna say.
No, come on, come on, please.
She's coming up, I just wanna say, it was Bernice's idea and I heard it in the meeting last last two weeks ago and I thought thought about it, I said, that's a great idea. And I'd like to follow to that, so everybody has a chance to ask every question they want from all the people and so we all hear the answers.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark is out there, Camden resident, I was at that meeting that Bernice spoke at and I agree. I like your idea then, I'm glad you're gonna pursue it, I think it's the right thing to do as Camden resident. My um question would be, could we please, I don't know, can I ask a question, could I just make a comment? Should we please include in this uh Opera House meeting the financial aspect of it, because as a taxpayer and everybody I know who respects their taxes, all they do is go up, they don't come down.
I think.
Um, the financial part of how much money was put in the dam?
Sure.
In the past?
Sure.
How much for the maintenance in the future, how much for the removal, how much for, you know?
Sure.
So, and I know some of you might not know, but you can estimate, when I have a project done at my own home, I ask for estimates, if it could go over, if it will under.
Sure, that's an excellent question, actually.
I think that needs to be included as a taxpayer, besides all the aesthetic things, I think dollars and cents is very important.
In in our last meeting, in our last meeting, if you probably weren't here, I'm not sure, but
I wasn't.
Audra did discuss the the.
Yes, but I would like to see it in black and white.
Understood completely, understood completely.
All the reports are put up.
That's one of the reasons why, and that will be coming soon, because we don't really even have yet a concept design, right?
I mean.
Understood.
Let me add, I think what what we should do, the way we should do it, is ask everybody to submit questions.
Right.
So that, you know, if we go, oh, we're gonna need to answer this one, so we can go out and get the expert or whatever, we need to get the the best information we can to answer the question. And then also have people in the audience be able to ask follow up questions or questions that weren't there, so, you know, anything there. Anything that people wanna know, let us know ahead of time.
Right, I hear that comment and that's kind of why I brought it up ahead of time, so I don't know when the state will be, but I figured you need some time for me to hear that information and that would give you time, I guess that I'm asking my question, but I'll also put it.
No, that's a very good question, I I also want to point out to people, um, you know, there's a lot of information on our website, and I know it's a lot, but uh, we're hoping to improve that also if I have any more of the questions that we hear arising from the public and be heard at the.
But like the waste treatment, it was put up in black and white, I understood it very clearly and I think.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, and so on.
We're the better.
On the website, have you been on the website?
Yes.
Restoration, we did six public meetings where we did.
I've only been to the last three.
So we did, this was over over Zoom over the past six months.
I mean, you don't have to explain it now, I think if we just, if we re- put it to the Camden Opera House meeting that Mark was talking about, I would appreciate it.
Or you could watch some of the recordings.
But if, I mean, there's gonna be a lot more towns towns people there, hopefully, and watching if it gets out and the news that it'll be that kind of meeting.
We actually got pretty good participation in a lot of those meetings, I mean, even, you know, Tom, Tom's there.
All right.
I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you for coming. You know, there was another person, we had to give a one second please, uh, back, yes, please. Trying to do it in order.
Hi, thank you, I'm Susan Ryder of Mountain Street. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm sixty eight years old and this is probably the first time in my life that I have actually said, huh, I'm not like asking government to do something faster, slower and different, you know, I've usually been all sort of the other side of the recruiter. I do think that there needs to be more information, I haven't been paying attention, like a lot of people, to this issue very much at all. Uh, I wasn't really very aware of all the public meetings and, you know, pandemics, a lot of strange things, it's been hard, it's been hard to have conversations. But I did find out about the uh public information workshop down at the harbor and I at the Harbor Park and I went and I I thought it was fantastic, I really learned a lot. And I really liked the idea of being able to talk to the experts and being able to ask different questions, not just question and answer, but actually an interchange of ideas and information, it was really helpful. You know, and then there were sometimes two or three people and they'd all be, we'd all be talking and kind of getting in the discussion about it. It was a really helpful format, I really liked it, that's just me, I've talked to a lot of my friends who also were like, may not really pay much attention to this and they thought so too, they thought it was really helpful, so I just wanted to put my two cents in, I I really liked it, I think you're on the right track here. Then this gonna take some time, hopefully by June, everybody will kind of be on a page and know what they think and then you can make a decision based on yours.
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
Um, um, I'm sorry, the young lady to the right here, you, please. Young lady already got up. Sorry, Karen.
My name's Jennifer Goian, I'm a Camden resident and I I appreciate your comments, I do feel though that um I guess better late than never, um, and that you can never be more than prepared, so be premature. That you should be prepared and and this is part of what I'm gonna talk about, so um, that we're getting there or heading in that direction is a good thing. So the the Save the Dam Falls Committee has offered a petition, as you know, to the select board, to place an article in the warrant. This article will offer the voters a choice to save the water hall, the dam and the mill pond at the head of Camden Harbor. First, uh, and there are three, three reasons that this petition should pass, first of all, the dam should be preserved for its intrinsic value to the town, for the beauty of it, the legacy, the economic vitality that it provides. Secondly, people of Camden have not yet fully been offered a public hearing about preserving the dam, it sounds like slowly we're we're heading in that direction. The people do deserve to be heard and I've been here many times and many, many people have been here over and over and over saying this to you. So again, I'm glad we're heading in the right direction. Third, preserving the dam does not create, some of the the statements that have been made does not create a focus. Third, preserving the dam does not create, some of the the statements that have been made does not create a flood risk. Uh, it does not prevent the creation of a fish passage. These goals are not mutually exclusive. So um, we are promoting this petition because the residents of the town need to feel that we have been a part of the process. So whether it's more information through the Opera House and any other means, some people are visual, some are verbal, people need to see and hear. I've had people saying, can you show me a picture of what you're thinking of? Um, and then they're gonna decide, no, I don't like that. I want you to save the dam falls. So um, we need to feel we've been a part of the process. I can't say that enough, and that we've been offered a choice, options, not that you had a report done, options were presented, and then you pushed forward on one of those options. It basically thrown the other two over the falls. So for three years, what we have heard has been a drumbeat to destroy Montgomery Dam. A drumbeat created and supported by people, town officials, select board, but never in those three years has has there been enough of an attempt to assess the opinion of the people, to assess the tolerance of the people for the destruction of such an icon we have in town, or to listen to the feedback necessary for making a prudent decision. A lot of people, you can make a decision after a long process, and it can be a very unwise decision in the long run. What we don't, we don't want regrets from you and everyone else in town saying, how did we let this happen? How did we let this happen, the destruction of the dam? We don't want that feeling. So if you vote to accept this petition, the town will finally obtain hearings on the value of preserving the dam. We should be maintaining and preserving our treasures, not destroying them. So please, please, as we go forward, think as individuals, not necessarily that you all have to be this, uh, you know, the mod squad, that you all have to be thinking in the same way. No, please think as individuals of those things that are important to you and that you will come to understand, hopefully, as we have more events, what the town residents would like as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
I I want to ask, uh, I want to ask a couple of things there. Um, number one, um, one of the questions I want to ask at, when we have a big workshop with the scientists there, because I don't, I haven't gotten a complete answer yet. And you you made a statement about the dam does not, uh, and people know if they see me talking, they, my concern is public safety, the dam does not provide a flood risk. And I haven't gotten an answer that I'm satisfied with from any scientist yet. Either way, yes, it does, or no, it does. And that's one of the things that I think a lot of people want to know about. So, you know, that's, that's a question, you know, we can say, oh, it's a flood risk, and you can say, no, it's not, but I haven't heard it from the scientists. And I told Meg uh, a long time ago, when we first met on the street, right after this, I said, I'm gonna, I want to find out the science behind this before I make any kind of decision about it. And the last thing I'll say about it, uh, I foresee that there will be a vote in June, and, you know, I certainly would predict that, you know, you will have a petition on the ballot because you will get the signatures if that's the way we're gonna do this. You will have the signatures, and there may be an alternate decision about taking out the dam or whatever, but the public will make the decision about. People will vote. It's not, I only have one vote, and it's not to the five of us here. It's is with the five thousand people in the town. I have only one vote of of all the five thousand people, and I want to make that clear to people.
Correct.
You know, and I don't know what that vote is gonna be yet, um, because I don't have the science answers.
I want to hear from the rest of the, I would, I would, thank you very much. Please.
Thank you. My name is Steve Misschison. I live on Mill Street in Camden. Appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about this important discussion. There have been several reasons stated by select for to remove the Montgomery Dam. They include reduction of maintenance costs, allowing fish passage, and reducing flooding. Let me address the flooding concern. The following excerpts are taken directly from the July twenty twenty one Interflue Report, and I confirm these with my perp of Interflue. Page three, with respect to restoration actions and objectives, model results show that dam removal alone may not result in lowering FEMA flood elevations below the Camden Public Safety Building. Additional model results show that relic structures beneath the former Brewster Shirt Factory building and the Washington Street Bridge also directly influence over bank flooding in this area. Page forty seven, the river flows under residential and commercial buildings, including the Brewster Building, the site of the former Shirt Factory, a relic water wheel, and line of weers that stretch across the channel beneath this building, creating a hydrologic drop upon the two feet. Additionally, analysis from the current study demonstrates that these legacy features influence peak flood water surface elevations near Washington Street. Page ninety six, simulated floodwater surface profiles during a hundred year storm with the dam and with the dammer roof show water level change of approximately two feet, four hundred feet upstream of the Montgomery Dam. Page ninety nine, flood changes are limited in the reach between the footbridge and the Knoxville Dam solely due to the removal of the Montgomery Dam and Knoxville Dam. Preliminary model evaluations were performed to assess the incremental benefit of modifying the water wheel and weir structures beneath the Brewster Building. This analysis suggests additional modest reductions in floodwater surface elevations are possible. While modest, these incremental conduct reductions are significant, which could potentially result in removing the public safety building from the floodway. Page one hundred, model results show that flood conditions have likely improved along the river compared to when the FEMA flood plain mapping was completed in the nineteen eighties. We interpreted similar reductions in flood inundation extents as likely the result of the changes to the Knoxville factory buildings and the Washington Street Bridge, which is now a clear span with no center pier. The result will be further affected by modifications under the Brewster Building, if implemented. And finally, on page one on one, table ten, indicates change in water surface elevations for a hundred year storm with a long term restored river scenario to existing conditions. So this with dams and without dams. The table shows the following changes with and without dams. Downstream of Washington Street, zero feet change. Upstream of Washington Street, zero feet change. Buildings downstream of Knoxville Dam, zero feet change. Upstream of Knoxville Dam, zero feet change. So to summarize, the Montgomery Dam is not the driver in a hundred year storm over bank flooding direct. It is other restrictions in the river channel. Maintaining Montgomery Dam, in my opinion, is prudent to preserve this innate and beloved feature of Camden. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll stop the applause, but you know better than that, Karen, you're on the fourth before. Um, wait, just a second before, I want to remind everybody, the action here is to reject or approve the petitions of the two groups. Uh, this is, great speeches, by the way, by everybody, and I'm sure they won't come in. But I I want to, I just want to say that, um, but this is not gonna, I'm not gonna let this turn into a debate about whether the ban of the the certain sing- singled out elements of this feasibility report, which we're studying completely, not in, not individual lines or paragraphs. It's a, it's a comprehensive document. That's part of the challenge we have as as town and select board. Um, so, uh, again, I I don't, I did online comments about the petitions, the need for them. That's the decision here. We're not debating whether or not we are supporting removing the dam or not supporting the dam. We're gonna have plenty of time for that. So if you have a comment about petitions, I will listen, raise your hand. If you don't, I'm not going to allow debate to continue.
Mine will be very brief, but just to go to my democratic right, have a little prestatement.
About the, about the petition?
Not it's, it's regards to Montgomery.
All right, please, please be.
I've been shut down for two years in my comments. I, I, Tom Roth, president of Camden. Um, I've been to virtually all the meetings, and I'm still searching for many of the answers. I own a business above the waterfall. I own property above the waterfall, and I have no answers to the plans that I keep caring about of removal of Montgomery Dam. Um, and they're legitimate concerns, and they haven't been answered. I have to make plans for my business, property, and I believe that many of the the business owners above the waterfall and along the river, um, need those answers. And I just want to have a brief statement. Um, the dam adds a crucial element to the vitality and beauty of downtown Camden. It is key to the success of Camden as a tourist attraction. Camden's primary business is tourism, and I can't understand why town officials would put that at risk, especially since it is totally unnecessary. It is unnecessary because Montgomery Dam has no impact on seed that will rise. It is unnecessary because Montgomery Dam does not increase flood risk in downtown Camden. Finally, it is unnecessary because fish passage can be built if the town really desires it. Fish passage seems to be the solution at the four dam sites upstream from Montgomery Dam. If that is the solution at every other dam site, why can't it be the solution at Montgomery Dam? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
And there was another hand up, I saw.
Can you just read the two petitions, so they know what you're talking about?
We absolutely will. We absolutely will. Like, we need to get to a motion really quickly here, one way or the other.
Do another hand.
I see.
It's Gene Brewer. I'm the resident of Camden, and I'm trying to issue this, because I'm from the group of saving the dam, all very good citizens. And I just want to say that what they've all said is what validates our petition. That's why we want a petition. That's my statement. So I know you're talking about petition, and this is why we wanted you to know that these are some of the reasons that we want to pursue a petition.
Just a very succinct, by the way. Please.
Hi, thanks. Our interesting voices too, but I'm Sparkle in Camden, and I spent some time in the polls yesterday just talking, talking to people about why this is being the topic of discussion, and I didn't learn more about it. And a lot of people are really grateful to have some information, and they knew a little about it, but not a lot. And a lot of times, people said, I know there's a lot of information on the website, but I haven't had time to go through it. I know there's some videos to watch, but I haven't had time to watch through them. And they were really grateful to just have a more simple, the first amorphous, and there's a lot of interest in this, and I spoke with over two hundred fifty people. They were quite, make my voice super, but there is a lot of interest, and I have to say, a lot of people came to talk to me if they had walked down the roll tables and said, wait, so this is going to a vote for the town people anyway? So that's what we we said, well, why was I just told that I had to sign this petition? And they were confused and felt pressure. And, you know, they just probably didn't condition, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of interest, and people want to know about it, but sometimes they just feel like it's just too much of it. They can't digest what's available right now. You know, they, they're welcoming new things, like, so a couple of people specifically said that they were started to watch some of the um, Zoom videos, which I was either online or watched the recordings myself, so I know what they're like. And I actually read the Internet reporter, but a lot of people have young kids, and remember what's left, and still have the question. And they said, I just needed in small doses, and they, and it's just, so the idea that Mark has about having a question answered, that's good. But on the other hand, I think, but had the, uh, town Harbor Park, Harbor Park, where people could go and have, answer, have a question answered. I think that's another option for, that's good for some people. So just, I think you do those different kinds of things, work with different kinds of people, and there's lots of others.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else about the petitions in the process, um, not here, and if you're really going to work to select a forward decision here, we that we can accept or reject, um, from my perspective, because as I said probably in the intro here, um, the, the early status of these and the potential of others, I I don't see much option but to reject these petitions, which by the way, means the petitioners need to go to get signatures to get the petition on the ballot. Just to be clear, we're not throwing it out the window, we're just going through the charter process, which clearly states we must, we must address it. If we reject it, then then the individuals involved must go get the, I think it's probably over three hundred signatures. I don't have the exact number.
Ten percent.
Yeah, ten percent of the last good material raised, yeah, right. So that's, that's, that's the process, so.
I I I believe they've already been doing that, because you're asking for signatures, uh, at the meeting at the night, so they're doing that. Um, and I think that's the best way to do it, is get the interest, uh, from both parties. Um, and the other thing is, I I do think it's premature to bring this up because we won't deal with putting things on the warrant until next March, I believe.
I bet I can see some people waiting right now, so.
My question is, you know, my suggestion is either ask people to withdraw, uh, as Matt suggested, and wait for, you know, we can have the meetings and have the information and and do all that, um, and and then they can continue to get signatures in that time, or, uh, we can postpone the decision, or we can make a motion to, um, turn down both petitions right now and and deal with it again at a more appropriate time.
Well, we have, as it stands, we have an official request of both parties to petition for their respective warrant particles. And unless there's something from them that retracts those requests, which I don't hear forthcoming, we need to act upon those two citizens but that, citizens' petitions tonight.
Well, I've just put it out there once again, and see Ken's here and Tom is just here, and, you know, the opportunity to withdraw this as opposed to having the board other accept or reject. It would, if the time comes, you guys can, you want to huddle about it for five seconds?
I think, I think you're pushing on a rope to do that.
So really, is there enough, is there a purpose to continue, you know, having public meetings in the way that you guys would like to have them?
Yeah.
I guess I'm confused about that, because what are, if, what are you hoping to gain from the public meetings? I mean, we want to be, lots of people have different ideas about how they would like the meetings to go, and I want to make sure that we, you know, people get the most out of it that they can, if the entire group that is asking us for a specific type of public meeting is also saying that, no matter what, they, you want the petition as it is, to go forward just as it is. Is there nothing at this point that could change your mind, or is there nothing to to discuss? I guess I just don't understand what you hope to gain by the public meetings.
Thank you. My name's Ken Rose. I'm the resident of Camden. Uh, thank you, Matt and Allison, for your suggestion. We do not need to huddle. We do want to move ahead. Um, I'd like to speak for just a moment about the value of this petition and the value that this petition already has had. A major part of our goal is to get the discussion going. Without this petition, we would not be having this discussion. A good decision, by definition, is a decision that everyone feels that they have had a chance to participate in. So in that regard, the Save the Dam Falls effort has already assisted the town in moving towards a good decision. We do look forward to participating and even hosting public hearings. I really like, um, Mark Ratner's suggestion for a meeting in the Opera, in the Opera House. I assume that because this is a warrant article, there must be public hearings, and we have months to go between now and June, and I assume that there'll be many public hearings. I would like to suggest, Mark, that, um, you invite more than the experts, be proud of the experts.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna.
It is time to hear from the townspeople.
Yeah, well, that's.
What would be different about that and hearing from you? I mean, we, any meeting is available to be, people can voice their opinions anytime. How different is it than?
Well, to back up, the way many momentous decisions are presented in the town is to start the design presentations. This is the way Sidewalk, the snowball, the snowball lodge, that is, the schools, that there is several iterations of design meetings where something is presented, remarks are heard, the design goes back and gets redesigned. So we have seemed to have skipped over the design process in this particular instance.
We did three meetings and you were there and we got in front and we're in the process of revising drawings right now. That's what's going on. And I also just want to be clear, could you, are you speaking on behalf of the library right now or on the? Because this is, I know that you've said this before.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, please, wait, I'll empty this room.
I apologize, but I asked that in a different way. I know that Ken, you've made that here a lot of times, but I'm still getting a lot of pressure. What I'm hearing a lot is, oh, the library, this or that. And so I do think it's a little bit confusing and normally you go through that thing where you just say, no.
Thank you, no problem. My name is Ken Gross, I'm speaking on behalf of the private citizen and on behalf of the Save the Dam Falls Committee. I am not speaking on behalf of the library, I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of the library that is.
Thank you, Ken, thank you. Thank you, Ken, thank you very much. So, Barbara, unless you want to make a comment about your petition, I presume as though I'm not hearing any impetus for withdrawal. The board has to revert to making a decision on, well, I would suggest first we look at the warrant, which is posted here. Is that the, this scrolls down below, is it? Yeah. Which basically says, shall the town protect, preserve, maintain, repair the existing?
Well, I'm gonna just share my screen. I'm gonna share, Karen, it's not, I'm making it so that everybody that's watching YouTube can see. I'm trying to make it that possible and.
Yeah.
I.
Let's stop, I'll read comments, please. No, I want to stop these comments from the gallery. Board is going to revert to a decision. If the gallery can't maintain its titles, I will have it leave. Is that clear? We don't, we don't need any reaction from the public unless we come up here and we try to do, to hear your voices.
Well, I'm having a little trouble getting it to. People are just gonna have to watch tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, he can read it and everyone will be able to hear it.
Sure.
I know, but I'm having trouble because it just appeared.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah. Okay. Shall the town, Camden, protect, preserve, maintain and repair the existing Montgomery Dam near Harbor Park in Camden? That is the proposed warrant article. Board, I suggest we come to a motion on this petition.
I will make a motion that we turn down the petition because I think it's premature to put something on the warrant at this early date. I would like to see an information meeting as I talked about and I'd like to, you know, work. But let me, I'll clear that up later, but I don't make that motion.
One second.
I would second it based on the conditions expressed by Mark Ratner in terms of the opportunity for public discussion and more input into the decision-making process by the general public.
The motion to reject is on the table and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Sophie?
Yep.
Okay, 5-0, that motion is hereby rejected by the board. The second article, could you bring that up, please? The second petition, this petition is as follows. As part of the restoration of the Montantook River, do you favor the select for proceeding with activities such as seeking grant funding on behalf of the town to improve river quality, river water quality, reduce flood risk and facilitate fish passage at the outlet of the river, including the removal of the Montgomery Dam to allow for a natural waterfall?
I will make the same motion that we, we decline this petition for the same reason. I think it's premature and I think there's a lot more information that we need to find and get out there. And as part of it, I'd like to say that when we have the next meeting, I'd like to ask Audrey, we're finding not just the two scientists, finding as many qualified people as we can to comment on all the issues. And if there's people that the Montgomery Dam people would like to have included on the panel, I'd like to, you know, hear from their people as well.
Just about that.
Let me finish the motion process, I'm gonna discuss it. Five seconds.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that motion. And again, the idea that this, with the caveat that there is discussion, that part of the rejection is the invitation to have the public discussion, making sure the public's in.
Discussion, awesome.
I mean, everything in this, the wording of this is something I'm very comfortable supporting and very comfortable putting out to voters. But I, you know, and I appreciate the show of support. I think that, you know, the big promise that we need to make as a select board is that we're not going to put things out to voters or encourage things to go out to voters until we think that we've prepared them. And so maybe by June, something like this will be ready for the warrant or something worded differently. But, you know, right now, again, you know, for the same reasons, I don't think we have it well defined exactly what should go out to voters. But I certainly agree with the things in here.
Right, now, echo what you just said, and as I said in the intro to this, was basically that this basically pretty much replicates our, as I said earlier about the select board of the town, but value and pursuing will be the recommendations of the feasibility study that was finalized in this year, this past summer fall. And allows, and permits what should be done on every single element of the town. And that's as much homework can be done in public hearings, including, well, not public hearings, public readings, public meetings, that's more appropriate. Public hearings come officially after you have something on the table to approve of. Public meetings, as Mark had suggested, or similar other types, some of which we've done, some we need to do more. But I think they, to the point Allison made, I think it's just premature because I mentioned the timing thing of these petitions. And we don't know honestly, and there could be a third or fourth petition coming to light in the next month. It's very possible. Petitions typically come, the last time we had, when it came in the winter of the year before an election, like January, I think it was January, somebody has this plastic bag, by the way, when we had a petition for that, which went to the ballot in that year in the past. So, you know, I concur with what Allison said, but on, and that, any other discussion, Matt or Sophie? No, we're not hearing any, I'll vote for a vote. Those in favor of the rejection, face the end? For Sophie?
Yes.
Okay, so this petition is similarly rejected by the board. And I think you all understand the next steps. Questions, by the way, any questions? I would strongly recommend discussions with Audrey and or our town clerk regarding the process and procedure to make sure no bumps happen along the road because there is a very specific procedure about petition documentation and format and et cetera, et cetera, that you have to understand. Mark?
One question I'd like to ask Audrey with coming up with some possible dates for an Opera House workshop.
I think that you all need to have a much bigger discussion about this.
I think so too.
Before you cast me with all the things that you've asked of me, Mark.
Yeah, I, Mark, we gotta be a little careful because one of the venue is important because the Opera House doesn't permit high-risk purchases. We have that here, but this room is way too small to do, we're contemplating. We have to do some homework investigating where it might happen, how it might happen, what the context of it and not just throw a direct.
I'd like, by the next select board meeting, to have that discussion so that we can plan for this. Because this is something we, we need to do and get it done and get it scheduled.
Thank you, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you all.
Thank you, even though you're very vocal tonight, thank you.
If I can say, if I can say, you know, I, I'm really happy about the discussion tonight and about different points of view being able to be shared. And these are complicated change processes and I feel comfortable with the decisions we've made. And I really look forward to learning more about those issues in the coming months. And I think, you know, it's really complicated to understand what's happening. So thank you so much for the good discussion tonight and thank you everyone who came and shared their voices.
Thank you, we'll give a second to people to play a little bit, want to leave.
Yeah, I mean, I'd also like to make the point, we're, we've got an extension on the engineering designs grant.
Yes.
It's likely that six months, we're six months out now. So I don't think there's gonna even be anything in time for June ballot to officially decide on. So like every, like we've tried to say from the very beginning, this is very, very early stages of any decisions, specific decisions about anything. And, you know, what it's, what we're gonna do, what it's gonna cost, where the money's gonna come from. You know, we're a long ways away from that. So, I mean, yeah, I can understand frustration about not having more information, but there simply isn't more information because there's a lot more work to do to get that information.
Right, it's just very, very early in the process.
It's like a feasibility study is very high level, it's very unspecific. There's a lot of work to do to go to the next stages to figure out what is actually going to be implemented. So I just want to make that point, there is so much work left to do. So any talk of a decision or putting something on a ballot or not putting something on a ballot is only going to cut off any further investigations, one way or the other.
Correct. I have to, I'd not shallow myself included, that I've made a statement a few times to people that the earliest we could do anything would be June, well, in reality, that's probably not gonna happen.
I would, I'd say that the timeframe that we're looking at now, June is too early.
I think it's impossible. In fact.
I know, I'm telling you right now, June's too early.
Yeah, it's just the way that works because in order to have, to go through the process with the ladder, it all takes a long time. And this is like all of these things that we study and they continue to be ongoing. We did a whole feasibility study about charting our own ambulance service with the other three towns. And now nobody's saying, well, when I'm starting a petition for or against this or it's something that we're looking at. There's a bunch of information. At some point, if it all comes together, which I don't, I don't really think it is, I don't know. But it's not moving forward until lots of pieces would come together. So if.
We should, we should stop talking about potential vote dates because we.
It's really got to get people overwhelmed.
All, all about one way or another would do is cut off further investigation and cut off further due diligence.
Yep.
And if that's what the citizenry wants, you'll find out, but.
All right, well, we'll move on to Audrey. I think we should probably move on to the, I think we have Stephen Company and the wings.
Yes.
And Sophie, we're gonna be losing very quickly with the tanner.
I'm still good.
Wait a second to get this.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
This is, this is kind of a lot, so I have to do all of the tech and all of the, since the other part of the system failed and I'm doing my best.
I know you are, you're doing well.
I thought you said you were gonna take a quick break so that people could.
I already did, but you want to take another quick?
Well, it seemed like a lot of talking of substantive matters during our break. Were you taking a break because?
No, I mean, not.
I thought they were just leaving.
They were just letting me leave the room.
I will work on, I'm pulling up Steve Dyer, of course, Steve Dyer is gonna be, like, okay.
So while we're trying to get, what we're doing here is getting Steve Dyer to give a presentation of the status of the remediation plan for the tanner.
All right. Do I need to bring anybody else on? I mean, obviously Steve, but.
I don't, anybody else?
I will, Jeremy.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
I think, Allison, you probably need to let Steve share his screen.
That will be allowed, but give me a second here.
I get it, you get it.
Why?
I may be able to.
I don't know if you want to let me, give me a second or let maybe, if you want. I was gonna give a little intro, but Steve can just go on and then we can answer some questions from there.
Very, very idea we have, looks like they all achieved their objective of getting the Brownfield Cleanup Program update from Ransom, so I think we should, if could, start with that and.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Steve? Are you, can you see my screen or no?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do you want me? I think that's it, right?
Go through your presentation.
Do you want to talk first, Jeremy, or?
No, I think, I think they're ready for you, Steve.
All right. Sorry about that. It's a weird thing because you can't really dry rehearse the screen sharing and how it commandeers a lot of the screen and all that. So hopefully everyone can hear me and can see the presentation. Jeremy asked me just to give a quick presentation on the Apollo Tannery, the Brownfield Cleanup Grant, where we were, where we are, what's next. It's really kind of focused as much as possible on the actual Brownfield Cleanup Program and not on the reuse and everything. And I know that's gonna be a, you know, a discussion that the town needs to continue to have and will probably continue to have for many years. But basically, my name is Stephen Dyer. I'm a senior project manager with Ransom Consulting. That's the founder of my company's name. It's not what we do. And where the environmental engineers and consultants that the town hired to carry out and implement the EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant. So, can you, did you guys, did you guys see the next slide?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Because mine is like, that's what I mean is, I'm like, it's looking like I'm still on the initial slide with you guys. So what's happened so far? Just a really quick summary, there's, this could literally be an eight-hour discussion going into them. Find minutia of what has happened with the Apollo Tannery. But a lot of environmental site assessments have been completed on the site. By my count, about 14 have been completed since bankruptcy was declared in 2000. So it's a, a number of different firms have looked at the property. The DEPs looked at it, the EPA's looked at it, the firm I'm with, Ransom. We started working on the site back in 2015, doing some assessment work there. You guys know a lot of the history, but, you know, some of the big milestones was the demolition that occurred in 2005 of the facility that Camden undertook. In 2008, Camden was successful in getting a Brownfield Cleanup Grant back then. And that was used to clean up some of the grossly contaminated soil on the site, as well as put some containment around some of the soil that was determined to be, you know, that would be the most cost-effective way with, with dealing with it. And so really, from that 2008 period on, not a whole lot happened on the property other than it sat there vacant. You know, the pathway went in, folks started using it. And then we started working in 2015 doing. Um, and then we started working in 2015, doing some assessments. Sort of at the tail end of that, we had some public meetings and outreach. We did some preliminary remediation planning and that really set Camden up for securing another brownfield grant for the area of the property that wasn't cleaned up, um, in, with the 2008 cleanup grant. That grant was awarded in 2018. It's a three year grant. You have three years from the EPA, you know, the EPA has you, wants you to utilize and take advantage of the grant in three years. Jeremy, uh, got an extension of a year on that. So we're in that extension time period right now. There was some concern by Camden about, um, contamination in the riverbank area. You know, the, the area really in like the shoreline zoning area of, of the site. Um, and so the US EPA came in and did a targeted brownfield assessment. That's what the, the TBA is. Can you see my, um, like my pointer when I'm on there? Good. Because I'll need that later. Um, that was, uh, completed at the end of 2019 into early 2020. And since that time, Camden, uh, started to go down the road of trying to secure a redevelop or redevelopment firm. And the reason for that really is these cleanup grants work great when you can kind of dovetail the cleanup to a very specific redevelopment plan, you know, you can get way more bang for the buck in the sense of some of the remedial actions that you're securing. Um, but as probably everybody knows in the room, that redevelopment, uh, firm, that kind of fell through, um, last year. So here we are with, you know, the, a lot's been done on the site and, and what's going on right now. So we do have an updated community relations plan and an analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives and ABCA. In the works right now, it's, uh, it's pretty close to being done. There's just some fine tuning of it, uh, that we need to, to go. But that's really the current status. So what's next? Um, can you guys see the what next?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
I got you.
Great. Um, so this is really what's next. So for the cleanup grant, um, finalizing the ABCA, the analysis of Brownfields Cleanup Alternative and the remedial action plan, uh, needs to be completed. That needs to be submitted to the DEP and the EPA for their review and ultimate approval. There's some wrinkles with, um, what type of cleanup? And where the cleanup needs to go. And I'll kind of talk about that a little bit more. Um, but we need DEPs and EPA's buy-in on what's being proposed. We'll have a public meeting and also a 30 day public comment period. Um, this is really, uh, a meeting with much more detail than tonight's meeting. This is kind of just a status thing. But that public meeting will actually detail what, uh, the remedial alternative being proposed on the site is, and then solicit public comments. Um, so that's really a, a better opportunity for the public to comment and review on, on, um, how the, the grant monies are going to be spent. Wrapping all of that information in the comments, uh, together, we'll develop, uh, a cleanup design, a formal cleanup design and prepare bidding document, documents, uh, put that out to a public bid, allow remediation contractors to, to bid on the work. And then, um, oversee the, the remediation, uh, of the site and then we'll, uh, facilitate, uh, the town at Camden having site closure or potentially partial closure depending on, um, you know, the, the exact scenario that's, that comes through there. You got it? Um, so this is, the next slide is likely remediation and why I throw those words there. Yep. Oh, am I on mute? Sorry.
If you're going to ask a question, just a clarification, how much more presentation is there? Cause like, there's a bunch of questions are going to jump up and I don't think there's a lot more.
Just a couple pages more of the, I'll be pretty quick on it. So this is. Are we good?
Go ahead, Steve. Yep.
Okay. Um, I, the likely remediation here, and this is we, you know, we have not completed the design or anything. We don't have full, uh, approval of the cleanup, but, um, it's basically the cleanup here, uh, that's would be proposed as an engineered cover system to prevent contact with contaminated soils and then some targeted soil removal near the pathway. We plan to construct the bidding documents in such a way that, um, we'll be able to maximize the, the town's grant. And, you know, and there may be a few items that don't get completed if, if the, you know, the funds aren't there where, where the town runs out of, uh, grant money. Um, the final three bullets here are all part of the remediation, but they're all parts that are, um, are already on the books, um, for the property and they're really for future users to deal with the groundwater extraction restrictions and, and things like that. Um, this cleanup is a very common cleanup. It's one that we've overseen and completed at probably 10 to 12 sites in the last three years using brownfield funds. Uh, so it's a, it's a very common, uh, type of, type of, uh, process here. So on this, I just wanted to just kind of highlight where this possible cleanup would be going. And hopefully you can see my, my cursor, but, but in this area, this upland area, which, um, is sort of the north, uh, northeast area would be capped. That's really where the cover system would go. Um, and then down in the lower southwest area of the property is where there might be some targeted soil removal as well as, um, some cover system down in that area as well. So schedule, um, it's a, you know, one of those things that we have a, a number of things that still need to be done. I, I just discussed them. In essence, like every single thing takes about 30 days. Um, it's kind of a funny item, but that's how it is. And so we have about seven months worth of work here. It's not really all that intensive in the sense that, you know, the, the actual remediation is a fairly intense operation for a couple of weeks. But you've got about seven months of, of, of work that needs to occur. The, the grant expiration is September 30th. So you can kind of, you know, do the math and, um, you know, our goal is to start with great earnest, um, in the next month or so, really get all of the public comment and the bidding and, and things like that done during the winter so that the contractor, uh, could be ready to start early summer. And, and, you know, be able to, to do the work, um, as, as soon as, you know, they're able to, so that we can kind of get them the biggest bang for the buck. If you really kind of pigeonhole them into, you know, this two week window or something, you're going to pay a little more for it. And so to, you know, be able to give them a little bit of a bigger window, we hope to, um, you know, save Camden some money and get, you know, all of the cleanup completed. Um, and that's really it. I had a couple of slides with just some examples. Which I can just, you know, this up here is just a cover system going in. And it's just a, you know, it's, it's not, uh, rocket science. It's not a, you know, the contaminants that are at the Apollo Tannery are, are pretty, uh, immobile and a cover system is really what, what would typically be used, uh, on those type of contaminants. Um, and that's really about it.
Board have questions first or?
I do have a question.
Is he done?
Yes.
I, I have a question. Um, if the deadline is September of 2022, we know that in, in other areas, getting contractors has been really difficult because of, uh, employment issues and things like that. Are, are we going to have any trouble getting, uh, a contractor to do the work by that time?
Um, I don't believe so. We've had, uh, we have, right now, we have three cleanup grant projects going on in the site. We had pretty good, um, contractor interest in them. Um, the most recent one that just started off was in West Cassett. Um, and we got extremely favorable pricing on that. So, you know, I think, um, a lot of construction, uh, is hard to get paving and things like this, but, um, this is sort of a little bit of a, a niche. That there, you know, there's quite a few firms that can do it. And so far we haven't seen a big exca- escalation in the pricing or, uh, not being able to, to do it. But that's, you know, exactly what you said is why I think the quicker we can put this out on the streets for bidding, uh, the better the pricing Camden will get.
Other question is Allison.
Um, yeah, so I, to me, this is all a little bit, um, I hate to say premature, um, but where are we? The idea is that there be some input into actually what we decided to do with the cleanup funds. Right? Um, I mean, we went through a really lengthy process last year of asking our, a, a town committee, CEDAC, to really diligently review these proposals, provide feedback. They did an extraordinary amount of work. It came to the select board and we, I think, had some really good discussions. We heard a lot from people. We were kind of almost at the point where we felt like, you know, maybe a majority of us might be able to just put something out to voters to see what they thought. Um, you know, there were concerns that kind of made it seem like that would be too rushed. And so then, um, we did it and put it on, on hold. I think to take up with another, with, with the new select work. Um, but I, what I'm hearing now is that we would kind of abandon that process of trying to, you know, I guess, you know, what would we be preparing the site for here? And if we're really, um, it, it feels like we should be going back to the, to the people that did a lot. I know Jeremy doesn't look like you want to, but, um, this is an area where I, I would like to hear from CEDAC, for instance. What do they think? You know, they watched all of that. They did all of this work and then they watched the select board kind of struggle. And this is something we legitimately struggle with. I struggle with that. I think a lot of people don't know what the exact right thing to do is. So I don't know, are we just abandoning that whole thing? What is the idea that the end use of the site would be after this? And then the next, the other thing that I'd just like you to touch on is, you know, the, the big thing to me that we know absolutely is that the Riverwalk is this sacred thing that the town is, is going to have forever and be in charge of forever. Um, not to mention the river. But to me, the best use of those funds right now would be to try to do as much as possible in the area where there's the most contamination. It seems to me that the area that we're going to do a cover system on doesn't necessarily need to be remediated if it were to continue as, you know, a place for the farmer's market to be and open space. I, the, the levels of contamination were very low there. And so I, I would like to make sure that we are dealing with the part that we know the town is going to keep forever. It seems that there's, the, the bank is eroding a lot and, um, to me, it feels that, that public portion of it, that easement probably needs to expand for the Riverwalk because, um, sorry, I, um, because of the, you know, being in the, in the flood plain and it's eroding. And if we need to deal with some of that contamination, then we might want to move the Riverwalk back a little bit further. Maybe that would also be, um, something, you know, that people that want more of it to be preserved as like a park-like feature could get on board with. Um, I think we all know, we all really agree that we want to use this property to, to help protect the river, to create access for the river to, to, um, you know, I personally don't want to see any more development and even the 500 year flood plain. I don't know. This just all feels like a little bit rushed. And I, I remember you telling me, Steve, that you were like certain that there wasn't contamination on the side of the river and that it had been, you know, it had been looked at. And then it turned out for that it wasn't, um, anyway, yeah, I just, how much of the problem will be dealt with at the end of this plan that you're proposing?
Jeremy, Allison's first question was, subject wise, was regarding the, um, I've heard was the, you know, the proceeding with remediation, whatever it is, uh, but compared it, it isn't right now, as I heard it, we are not going to wait for the selection, if there is one, of some development of some kind, uh, but we're going to go proceeding with remediation because of schedule. And then, uh, and then we're going to go forward. And that's why this, by the way, that's why this agenda item was to look at what the current plan is and why. And then also in parallel, um, uh, what we're going to do or to evaluate the future of the tenor. Correct? Is that correct, Jeremy? Or would you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Bob. Um, and, and I appreciate Allison wanting to get a development to work and, and and, and at the same time is taking advantage, like Steve said, uh, you get more fan, more bang for the buck when you've got a developer involved. I think the real challenge is, is the reality of what it takes to go through the process. In our instance, I mean, if we had many years to do this, um, moving forward, I think that is, that's doable. However, we have a grant, we have got grant funding that needs to be expended and the grant needs to be closed out. And we need to get a VRAP finalized by DEP by the end of September of next year. Um, and in order to get something to town vote, get ordinance amendments done and get a developer, um, working with our environment, with Steve Dyer and our consultants to develop a cleanup plan. The reality is to get that all built and implemented by next September and all that process go through by next September. It's not, it does not work. So I think the, the reality is, is trying to, and I, and I appreciate you having a work, the desire to schedule a workshop because, you know, as we move forward, um, you know, we can design this plan. We have to design the plan and the ultimate uses on the property based on remedial action guidelines, which are standards that are in place for reuse of properties. You know, we can work on that and we can design a plan that, a cleanup plan that can facilitate a future uses on the site. And I appreciate Allison's desire to protect 500 year flood, flood plain. I, I, I really do. And I think that is something that can come out of this discussion and the discussions that we would have moving forward as part of community relations plan and public comment period. But in order to do all this again, and, and to finalize the cleanup, get it done, spend the money, um, we've got to have this done by the end of September. And in order to do that, it's just the timing is where we are. I mean, last, and I appreciate the desire to, to have CEDAC look at it. And I think that might be appropriate to have CEDAC involved moving forward on what are we going to do once the cleanup's done? I mean, I've spoken to a couple of the developers that were of, you know, significant interest, uh, that you folks as a select board had. Um, and they had some concerns with the process coming back. And those concerns are the unknowns of zoning amendments, the unknowns at the ballot box, what goes to voters. Um, and to do that and spend the, spend the time and, and invest in this with the unknowns, understanding that we've got to have this cleanup done by September. It just doesn't work. So I think, and I know there's one developer that remains very interested. Um, and he's willing and he understands that the cleanup needs to get done and we need to spend the funds and, and move on. And, and what would happen in the future, we can again, design a, a We can again, design a a cleanup plan and cap that facilitates a wide range of future uses, again, based on the guidelines that EPA and D E P have. And a developer, once we clean it up, the developer would then move forward that we choose. And then it would be their property, their responsibility to change the cap or amend the process that their approval with D E P. And then the town would be out of it. But at least that point, we could decide whether it's going to be housing, where it's going to be industrial uses, whether it's going to be park use, that can all move forward as we're moving forward with this while we again facilitate a cap that can facilitate all of those uses. Does that help? And I I Steve, I is that right?
Yeah, that's I believe it did. I just think I heard the question was, you know, when I don't hear us abandoning be when it comes up in term. But but we we but we're in a position now where we must proceed with capping it as a site and getting it done in some of the elements you mentioned.
Yeah, but no, the main point is, are we gonna, what are we capping? And where are we? What are we going to be? There's this isn't a huge amount of money. And so it's not. It it seems like we should deal with, use the money to deal with the part that's the worst. Are we going to clean up barrels and things like that on the side of the riverbank with this or not?
I would just add, we we have not done the cleanup design yet. We haven't, we're we've been on hold. So all of those type of questions would, we need to go through that and and look at possible means of cleaning up everything and what the there's a very, the ABCA takes nine different criteria, each possible, possible cleanup alternative, cleanup technology, and it evaluates it on feasibility, cost is part of it. And there's a whole analysis that needs to go on that you're jumping ahead of and that hasn't been done yet. So I I can't answer those very specific questions, which are great questions, but it's just premature at at this point to know what the cleanup is is going to entail.
One can most likely that information would become available into two thousand twenty two, I presume. We're already in November.
Yeah.
One. And so I would assume that information will be.
Well, I would say that, you know, we're talking about scheduling a workshop.
Yes.
I think that, you know, starting this process with Steve is a really important component of that first workshop.
Yes.
And it can be old. So one is, you know, kind of starting the the cleanup process and kind of figuring out, you know, all the the parameters that he's talking about in the ABCA and what's going to be important for, you know, spending energy and resources on remediating. And then the second part of it is that broader discussion about how we move forward with planning for how the tannery is going to be re reused.
Given that great summary, sounds like this workshop's going to be a little bit a month or two away.
I would, I'd say no.
Well, I mean.
Sooner or later than that. I would, I'd no, I'd like to have it in early December if we can do that.
So will will Steve, you said bring information about the cap and will that be available?
Well, I mean, I don't think, you know, it's it's kind of the beginning of things. I think there's some things that Jeremy and I can work with Steve on to prepare
Okay.
for the workshop and probably some information you can give all to all of you.
That's fine.
But it would be good to have that be sort of the beginning of that discussion about what, you know, the ABCA is going to look like and and the process that Steve laid out in a little bit more detail. And then the second part of it is our responsibility for figuring out how to move forward with this site.
Well, how to move forward with the site, I presume, when we bring to the table some of the especially the benefit of our newsletter, remember some of the, well, what we've done and what the next, what what the realistic practical options are in terms of evaluating that site for the next step, which you might, whatever.
Is the workshop public?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let me ask Steve, you have a question. Steve, you might come up. Make sure everybody can hear you, Steve.
What's up? Yeah.
Everything is, we do is public.
Steven Gold Grove Street, located in Millville. My question is question and comments. What was the original amount of the grant? How much has been spent on engineering? And since it seems like we're going to have seven more months of engineering, how much money do we anticipate is going to be left for any potential cleanup? That's my question. My comment is I agree with some of what's been said that we should just spend the money, whatever's available to cap the site. We're certainly not going to be involving more developers at this point because it's too contentious a subject within the town. And then the advantage of capping it is, as Jeremy stated, it's a done deal. If we ever get involved with a developer, everything is his responsibility.
Right.
So if you could answer the first question about the numbers.
I I mean, I don't know the top line, but Steve, he raises a great point. So the longer this drags out, the less money we have for the construction and cleanup itself and the more money. And it's not because like, you know, Steve is just there spending money. There's requirements of the EPA that they do quarterly reports regularly for the whole duration of the grant. And of course, that costs money to to prepare. So I can't answer your exact question, but you're making a really good point that sort of the longer this takes, the less money that we have for actual site cleanup.
Well, I assume we've been paying ransom.
Absolutely. But I like, like I said,
What's left?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you an answer when I don't have the information.
Can you give me the starting number?
I don't even remember it because it was like twenty seventeen.
Wasn't it two hundred thousand? I think it was two.
Well, what other suggestion would you?
Yes, I can look it up, but can you?
Yeah, I'm not gonna do it tonight.
Yeah.
That's what she's saying. I'm just a.
I think Jeremy says he has the numbers, but.
If we have, you know, we've had these contractors using the property. This, I don't know if we've been charging them, but we should have been blackmailing them to do some partial filling and cap work while they're even if it doesn't match the design.
I think they would love to dump some fill there, but we might not want to.
But that's, well, but basically, you know, this is is an update of what we're trying to do to get the site with the decision, the penalties and recommending that we're gonna, we're gonna cap the site. We're gonna, we're gonna remediate it. We're not getting longer. We're gonna try the more advantageous room having a developer in hand at the same time as we're trying to do the nation design. That's not going to happen. So the discussion about the design and what happens, sorry, what happens with the site will come in discussion as part of the scheduled workshop to be scheduled, appropriate smart. Yeah.
Very quickly, I was interested in the status from the Millville Apartments' point of view.
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, Nina Holland. Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I called that corporation and I was told that they were told that somebody else had been chosen. And so they were, they were off the slate.
We're going to address that all in the workshop and not address any rumors that you've heard.
Lord, this was personal.
I'm sorry. We will bring the data to the table at its time. That will be at the workshop, including prior bidders involving them if they want to be involved.
So I can't tell you what Mike Miller said that. I will, I will do that the next time.
Well, you can say, you can say anything you want to say.
I'd like to hear what we have to say.
Um. I did get ahold of him through email. I typed out his answer. I was just wondering what, where he stood because I couldn't figure it out. And my principal was not responding. He responded immediately back to me on a Sunday morning and said he had last fall was told that there would be more discussion or communication and he hasn't heard since then. Now that's what I have been watching. That's all he said.
Thanks. Thank you, Dana. Thank you very much. Tonya, I'm hopeful remediation.
Tom Restic, Camden, Maine, sixty seven Rosson, right by the tannery. I think it's really important because we're discussing the grant itself. And this was never discussed at the C D A C. You know, they may have gone into great detail, but they avoided one thing at that C D A C discussion. And that was the purpose of the grant. What the grant says, what it's for. The grant specifically says the town intends to clean up the site and redevelop it into a park and year-round farmer's market. And that was the actual word. Okay? Well, if you look at the grant application, it goes into great detail about the work of the tannery work group and working with the community and even mentioned our personal group and how they wanted to work with us to clean up the site. This, none of this was discussed at the C D A C. So I don't know if what the legalities are in terms of a grant being saved, but it's but it certainly seems disingenuous that this has never been brought up in any of the select board discussions, what the purpose of this grant is. On top of that, I think it's also curious that we've been working on this cleanup grant for since twenty eighteen over three years. And the town has done its best to dirty the site. Every every project in town, almost everyone has been staged with dirt and dust. And we have videos we can play for you showing how dirty this construction has been. And as we know, there's many more construction projects scheduled in this town. And to to be using federal money to clean up a site and then dirty it purposely, continually. The other purpose of this grant was to improve the neighborhood. Does does staging construction constantly at the site improve the neighborhood? It's disingenuous. And I would hope. I mean, what's under the water is under the water. I would hope we would correct what's happened there. And honor honor the spirit of the grant. I don't, I don't think EPA cleanup grants are meant, prepare them for construction staging sites.
Thank you, John. Any comments, Jeremy, or?
I can answer the money question. So the two hundred thousand dollar grant originally.
Oh.
And we have across nearly seventy thousand left.
Okay, thank you.
Rough numbers.
All right. Any comment on the grant application question?
One of them doesn't want to, then.
Jeremy, Jeremy raised his hand.
I mean, I just, I I wanted to say, I mean, Tom has asked this question before on the legality because the grant application said X, Y, and Z. I mean, the reality is, and I I did inquire with EPA and what is in the grant application does not necessarily mean that that's the end result of the property. So I mean, I appreciate what Tom has to say, but that does not necessarily mean it has to be spent that way or the end use has to be consistent with what the application said. I did get.
Been with EPA about our process. And they they've been informed every step of the way. And I would like to make the point that every single application or proposal that was received by the town at the farmer's market and had green space in it. So that was never ignored as part of.
We're, we're not going to adjudicate this here tonight. Do you have a different question?
I do. I wondered what happened to the thirty thousand.
Now, please, please stand up and introduce your.
Eleanor Mason Peters.
Thank you.
And I've been involved with this group and I just want to know what the thirty thousand, the thirty thousand dollars.
So that's going to ransom for work they've done to date. Ransom consultant.
Can we keep that chance to pass?
Absolutely.
Every time to then because it seems like we don't know anything about the money. And we were very involved in the beginning about how much money it was and how much hell it's going to be spent. And then we go here.
Yeah, if you'd like, if you'd like invoices, I can send you invoices. That's all very easy.
There's also a preliminary draft budget included in the application and all that. So we can get that. That's not a problem.
I also want to make a comment. We've been working on this for many years. And I find it interesting back to where we started. We've had committees, the the town spent money on a committee to come up with ideas about the property. And it seems like we just sort of going around. And we're repeating ourselves, inviting developers. We did that before. And I just it's hard to watch. You know, it's been years now. And we're all going back to the beginning. And then there's little changes like Allison wants to work on the river.
Yep.
We're going in different directions. I don't know. I think when the the committee decided and the select board decided that that was what we were going to do, we should have, I don't know why that just changed, why you didn't stay with that.
Awesome. Are you any other questions?
No. The select board at any given point has very, very little power in town. And it's, it's really true. And I would invite anybody to come and try it out and discover for yourself. That's the way our system is designed. And so just like we don't have the power tonight or anytime to make a decision about the the future of the tannery, neither did the select board that came before us. And for every passionate speech about doing one thing with the tannery that I've heard, I've heard others, I've received emails, we receive lots of communication about this, and it is not all the same. It is so that's the reason that it keeps going around and around in this town. And and I've lived here my whole life. I remember it as a tannery. I remember many stages of it. I remember every year voting at town meeting that it was going to be for economic development. I hear from people today that are very angry about the town not following through with its commitments from before. We're continuing to pay the cleanup bond on that property until two twenty twenty five. So it was almost a million dollars. And the promise to the community was that it was going to be an economic development thing. I think the that priorities change and that the town has changed its views some and that there is likely more, I know there is, there's more interest in green space and the farmer's market being that like that economic development piece, I think, was really exciting to every, a lot of people. So in some ways, we've made, we've made the compromise with the Riverwalk. There has been progress made, but there are there are a lot of people in the town that are bitter in the exact opposite way that you're bitter. And so it is hard. We get, we we get a lot. The reason that that everything ends up stopping, you know, progress gets made is because the select board gets completely worn out by the the opposing viewpoints. And it, then we, then we wait. And so um.
The previous select board voted for it.
The selector didn't have the power to to do that. They they voted to accept the recommendations of the committee and then many of them got voted out. Or or they moved on.
Eleanor, the only way that would have been binding and been something that everyone was obligated to move forward with is if it had gone to town meeting. And there was a money. I don't, none of us.
Because the selector chose to not put it forward to voters or maybe they forgot. I don't know. We weren't, I was here.
I mean, when you took over from the old selectors, why didn't you?
We disagreed with some, we disagreed with things. The thing.
But we do have power then.
We have the power only to put things up to voters.
Power to evaluate and present.
And we don't have there to put something out to voters like that, there also needs to be a funding mechanism. And with the incredible park resources that we have in this town and the fact that we know there is continued contamination outside of that river, I cannot in good conscience recommend to the voters that we invest in playground equipment and public park types of activities without first dealing with finishing the cleanup. That that is my personal priority, but.
There's construction, equipment and soil.
And lots of.
And kids are all playing there.
That's not contaminated itself. That isn't, that isn't, and I I have seen dust there too. I'm really a braver. I've been frustrated by it and I called and said, there is dust there and that's not okay. You do have legitimate grievances with that, but we also hear from other people who say they are happy to see the property being used for some, because if it does, if staging, if staging doesn't happen there, it has to happen somewhere else.
What about John Street?
And in many cases, in many cases, that And in many cases, in many cases, that, that shortens the length of projects downtown for us. And we do get, the town does reap a benefit. And so your concerns about it being used are one aspect of all of this, but.
Yes, of course, of course.
Other, some of the other people that live in the neighborhood though, don't provide the same feedback, so.
We're not going to, first of all, this agenda item is to discuss setting, status of where we are. We've done that. Secondly, set a workshop to discuss two elements I hear about, which we will prepare for. One is the approach, RE, the, I guess we call it the ANCA. And that, and those elements to start that discussion, and in saying workshop to bring to the table recommendations from, especially from yourself and Jeremy, as to the feasible options we have going forward, whether or not the former players are active or not. And also what other options there may be for, they are, for the utilization of this site post remediation.
So I'd recommend the week after Thanksgiving.
That would be.
If Steve's available.
Let's take a look at the calendar.
Steve, does that look like a time when you're going to be available?
You're talking about the twenty ninth through the third?
Yes.
Which is not a select board meeting week.
Good thing, you know, we have the opportunity to make the site a little bit cleaner. And we're going to do something that will help it for any use. And so like, no matter what we think the ultimate use of the tannery is, let's, let's all just at least try to use this proactively so that no matter what, when we're done, it's a little bit cleaner and we can all enjoy it more. So we do have a lot of things in common that I know we all agree on.
Um, so here's our mental, the week of.
But.
Uh, the week of, uh, November twenty ninth, that week. Through December third, as any day or especially you, Steve. If that, does that sound like a reasonable time period to you?
From my, my perspective, that week is actually like a hell week for environmental professionals. The EPA brownfield has a huge deadline. That, that first week, so if it could be literally any day beyond that, it would be a huge help.
Why don't we take a look at, well, the week of the sixth of.
Six.
And there's seven, there's a select board game, also eight. Eight, the seventh, is that select board day? So we have six, eight, nine, and ten. Any of those days, Steve, work or don't work for you?
No, those are all good.
All right, then I would propose, um. Yeah, Thursday, the ninth, and late morning or very early afternoon. Any other comments?
We won't get that, I, we have so many daytime meetings, and I get complaints all the time that people can't attend. If this is important, uh, people work, I'd like to see it, you know, in the evening.
So that the restaurant workers can't attend.
Yeah, but the, the comparisons, the, I'm sorry, are not accurate. More people work during the day than work in the evening.
Three evenings, the only evenings I have that week are the sixth and the tenth. Friday removed it. And it has to be the evening. I, I don't, I, I read these, but these workshops are also videoed and people can, you know, zoom in and whatever. Yeah, I understand that, but, but I believe it's the rest of the board, so.
We're having an evening meeting right now, but I mean. We're having any, we have a lot of evening meetings also.
I know, we have a lot of meeting meetings that are still ongoing and other things aren't going at the same time. But if it's going to be evening, it has to be six or ten, maybe seven, eight, and nine is out there. Evening.
I'll let the rest of the board decide.
Me too.
Uh, Steve, what? The sixth would be better, I think, and Monday's better than Friday, I believe.
We're asking Steve to spend his evening too.
Is this something you want Steve in person for? Yes?
Um, yeah, I, no, we can actually be on Zoom if we want to.
Same way we're doing it now.
But, but I would propose that it's going to be evening and also be earlier than six thirty. Other board members, Matt, Sophie?
I would prefer, if it's recorded, I'd prefer day. So Thursday afternoon, maybe do late.
Thursday, Thursday, Monday at one.
Monday or Thursday?
Thursday, what time?
Uh, Thursday the ninth.
Yeah, what's her name? You said like, like a four o'clock, or something that's.
And with kids, I, I bring my kids everything.
I can only, this evening, I can only do six or ten. Eight, that's just the way it goes. My evenings are fairly full, especially, especially in December.
What about Sophie? Sophie?
And on what day? Thursday the ninth?
Thursday night or, so Mark, how, how passionate about evening? Can we do it two o'clock? If it's, if it's, if it's recorded and put up next?
Yeah, I'm happy to do the afternoon. Yeah.
What about Thursday two?
Uh, it's tight for me, one o'clock.
One o'clock's fine. I.
All right, one o'clock Thursday night, Alex. All right, what was it? Okay, Jeremy? All right, Thursday, December ninth at one P M here.
Yeah.
Well. Yeah, one. Okay. One word, not one. Thank you all.
Yeah. Thanks.
Steve, you okay with that?
Yep, that works. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you guys very much. Try to find my agenda again and go through. I believe we need to address the KRT appraisal proposal for services for which Mr. Carey has been here for ten hours.
Oh, I'm sure Carey would care. I was, I've been thinking, what's Carey here for? Am I, I'm going to go to.
We'll take a five-minute break. Good to see you, Nina.
Well, I looked for you at the grocery store. So I can attack.
I, I haven't seen you there recently.
I looked for you and.
Just call me in that coffee. We breaking? Yeah, Friday break. Glad you put her. Yeah. It's like, glad you put her over there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, because it's, that's the Tiana, that device right there, so it's sort of projecting.
It's a mirror image. It's a mirror image. That's what it calls.
It's a little bit of wrong.
It confused me too.
I heard it move around everywhere we're speaking.
So you can see it moving through?
Well, if, like, if, um, it, it might pick up on me, but it would like flip from Bob to me if it picks up on my voice.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's always moving. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Fun start, huh? I've been thinking about that. I just, I'm trying to do it. Yeah. I totally agree. I would rather spend time with. Carrie, you guys get ready, Carrie, you're next.
Get ready for me first.
Oh, my God. Oh, well, to get to meet with you. Because I think we, oh, Sophie now, so. Yeah. It's only two hours difference over there or something, two or three hours. Yeah, I think. I'm not sure, but I think it's only two or three hours. In Dakar. It's, it's kind of the west coast of Africa, as I recall. It, it, it's, it's kind of like the L A, San Francisco thing, you know, the same time zone, but there's like an hour longer plane flight to San Francisco than L A because of that coast thing. It doesn't seem that way. Thanks for coming. Yes, it's.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know.
I'm so sorry, Carrie.
No, we got to be careful scheduling two presentations in one night.
Yeah.
Not the presentation parts, the other part.
Yeah.
You got to plan forty-five minutes for a presentation.
Yeah.
It's about fifteen, twenty presentation, another twenty minutes of discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not going to fit in.
I know, I should have, I, I just wanted to.
I get it, I get it.
Carrie getting stuff out there, and I forgot that he'd probably be waiting because of.
Bobby, you got to try and do C D and E tonight as well?
What?
We've been trying to do five C D and E as well.
Um, I'm, I'm Audra. I think we don't need to jump at the select board meeting calendars, right? We probably, we probably.
No, we got bigger. You guys all fried bigger fish today. I just, like, I honestly just, that's like a ratification. I had to sign it. Had to do it. I think it's more me explaining to you, I had to sign this.
It's done.
I couldn't go with a solar option. We looked and we couldn't find one.
That sounds like the, you know, town managers' report to me. I, I.
I agree. Let's kick that out. I think, let's kick that out of the town manager's report.
Yeah, and then the meeting, uh, we can, we can schedule that.
Yeah.
But I'm going to want an agenda that I knew. From then. We are, no, we, 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 Alice, we're probably going to take the select board meetings calendar for next month.
Oh, you started the meeting again?
No, no, we haven't started anything.
He's making big decisions.
I'm just going to discuss it when we're all active here, but let's just take a look at this. It's what it is.
Are you planning on reading us those notebooks before the end of the meeting?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, my select board report is going to be robust. I'm finally going to have my, my moment at the podium. No, I'm just kidding.
All right, we're all here, we're back on, Bruce. All right, um, just in terms of strategy here, next would be the approval of the proposed reevaluation of KRT appraisal for the pending reevaluation services for the town of Camden. Carrie would leave that. I would suggest, um, we, um, we take the select board meeting calendar uh, next time, move that forward and of the actually approval of the contract is really a discussion item, and we can have that as, that is part of discussion under, uh, town manager report. Uh, everything else, that's it. So unless anyone disagrees, uh, we can move right into item approval of the proposal for reevaluation, which was a, is a memo in our packet. There was no written, by the way, very fresh. Especially with the percentages, that's very strategically brilliant. But anyhow, the, the proposal, summarize it for us, please.
I'll be happy to. First, I want to tell you how thrilled I was to see how far up I was on the agenda.
And I, I'd like to make some public apology to Carrie for the whole world to hear and see right now. I'm so sorry.
Mix two of us. We were saying, by the way, we're, we're short one select board member, so Sophie had to pull off because of that.
And then I was thrilled that my voice would be in Africa.
I'm here. Oh, yeah, I was going to say, Sophie, I thought you were. No, I'm, I'm here. Um, you know, you're not short one board member. I'm still here.
Thank you, Derek.
I've got a handout, so you can better follow what I'm saying.
I love handouts.
You're welcome. I just want to make everybody's evening.
It's the menu from the water truck.
I wish it was.
Is it takeoff?
Would you take one in passion? So basically, we're living in a real estate market boom. And this, this year, our ratio, and by ratio, I'm talking about assessed value divided by sale price. This year, our ratio overall, on average, was ninety-one percent, which allowed us to certify apple.
Right.
That has been dropping. A ratio next year has already been decided by main revenue to be eighty-eight percent. And I'm allowed to add ten percent to certify add. So at eighty-eight percent, I can certify ninety-six point eight, which is ninety-seven. And what that means is that the homestead exemption, for example, which is twenty-five thousand dollars, will be reduced to twenty-four thousand two hundred fifty.
Right.
The veteran's exemption to five thousand eight hundred twenty from six thousand. Our revenue sharing, which this year was three hundred fifty thousand dollars, if it was the same next year, that would be reduced to three hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. So that, that's just next, that's just next year. The year after that, and that's what I just handed out to you, using, I, I, I figured, made these calculations with two-year averages and one-year average. So we're, the median is the, is the ratio we use the most. So the next year, we would be at eighty-one percent. Uh, using the two-year average. Using the one-year average, we'd be in seventy-seven percent. So now we're dropping down from this year's ninety-one, uh, ninety percent, uh, I'm sorry, eighty-eight percent down to seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
In one year?
In one year.
Oh.
That's what the market had done. Uh, and what I did was, we use, we, I figured all the averages, but we use the median. And you can see we're going to seventy-seven percent uh, on overall properties, all residential properties, seventy-six percent. On single-family residences and seventy-eight percent of condos. Now, that's seventy percent. That's already, I wrote this memo to Audra the end of October, October twenty-first. We, that was seventy-eight percent at the time. Now we're seventy-seven percent.
One percent drop and so.
So we keep, we keep on dropping. So the, the, the thinking here is that we try to catch the nice as it's falling. And, and bring values up. Because if we wait too much longer, the gap between the value and where it needs to be will be sticker shot again. Which we better avoid.
That's why we're closing December for revaluation.
Yeah. So that will be the values as of April first, two thousand twenty-two.
I see.
And, uh, we, we have, I mean, I don't need to bring this to one hundred percent. I mean, we could decide, um, that we want to be at eighty-five percent. But what's really important is that everybody be equal. Uh, so one of the other terms for a revaluation is equalization.
Yeah.
And want to make sure everybody in the market is paying the same proportion of their, of their worth.
Which is, which is by the black art, but your memo suggests ninety-two, ninety-three percent.
Yes, and that's, that's why I ran it for this reason. So everybody that I speak to, first, let me say this.
Yeah.
When the pandemic hit, all the assessors were huddling together and saying, oh, my God, the market's kind of bottomed out, and we're going to be after the raise meal rates and taking the ramp of voters and all this sort of thing. We were not very good economists, although it wasn't pandemic, so we can be excused maybe.
We think it was.
But now the thinking is, and I've talked about real estate brokers, other assessors, economists that I read. Nobody thinks that the market's going to, that it's going to be a burst bubble. People do expect some kind of plateauing, some kind of leveling down, but not a drop in the market. So I'm thinking if we go to ninety-two, ninety-three percent, that gives us a chance. If the market stays robust, it'll go down some more, but not so much that we can't just tweak it up again, but we have to. But if the market does tax out, we have plenty of room between ninety-two and a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, the alternative, obviously, is to strive for a hundred. And if the bubble happens, it's a double whammy because they're over, the assessment just drops like a rock.
Exactly.
Which is not good.
Not good at all. Not good at all.
Well, ninety-two, ninety-three would also buffer, uh, what's clearly, in my opinion, in the middle market of homes here is the biggest, will have the biggest impact in terms of increase in valuation because of the sweet zone that it is. And if that is held to ninety-two or ninety-three percent of valuation, that's a huge difference from.
It certainly, it certainly is. And, and we're seeing it on all the market types. I mean, from the most expensive homes, uh, to the least expensive. But we were talking about that, that area right there that, that might get hit the hardest.
It's the sweet zone.
Yeah.
And then it's, there could be thirty, forty percent increases in some of those zones.
Right.
Well, I mean, I'm just guessing, but you, you know, I'm saying sweet zones, I don't know, that is exactly three hundred and fifty, five hundred, whatever the sweet zone. Well, I mean, I'm just guessing, but you, you know, I'm saying sweet zones, I don't know, that is exactly three hundred and fifty, five, whatever the sweet zone ranges, that's the market that's going crazy, you know, even though at two twenty-five. Yeah, I was, yeah, two twenty-five, nothing else, yeah.
I'm actually, this is very difficult for anybody to follow who's, um, watching at home, um. I need a refresher course in why we care about evaluation being up, you know, what are the, why do we need to, what's beneficial about being on a hundred percent, what's versus seventy-eight percent, or how does anybody benefit from that?
There's, there's two ways, two answers to that question, one is nothing. As long as everybody's at seventy-eight percent and everybody's equal, that's okay, but what happens is, people will get a lesser of their homestead exemption, they'll get a lesser amount on the veteran exemption, they'll get a lesser amount on, uh, things like revenue sharing, tree roads, um, and, uh, maybe, maybe the state pays us based on our valuation, what could be reduced by that, by that ratio.
But doesn't the sum of what we get from the state also decrease when our value goes up? Don't we end up having to pay more to the county, more?
No, no, because they, they equalize us to a hundred percent, and they figure our, our town valuation. So let's, let's just say, for example, right now, we're at a billion four, and we're at ninety percent, they're gonna take that, that billion four and bring it up, I have the number here, actually, ten percent, they're gonna bring it up to be a hundred percent, and they'll figure out what we have to pay to the schools and the county based on the equalized value of, uh, the normalized value of. So, that number.
That's, that, you, you gotta.
What, a math class?
That's, that's not, I understand a lot of this, and I've gotten it before, but that is really complicated, what you just said there. You're, you're telling me that we're not gonna have to pay more to Midco Solid Waste if it turns out, like, our total.
I, I'm telling you, everything is based on, whether we're at sixty percent or a hundred percent, everything is based on a hundred percent.
I don't think NICO Solid Waste equalizes assessments, but this, for the, anything the state, the school and the county, they equalize our assessments. So they look at, yeah, they look at our ratio, and then they apply what the value actually should be, based on what a hundred percent is.
So NICO Solid, okay, so are you sure the county does?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because, because they'll send out, when, when you look at the county, kind of like splitting out on their spreadsheet, what we pay in county tax. They have our valuation, and then they have our equalized.
And so that means that if Hope is at seventy percent,
No, right.
They don't, like, Hope doesn't benefit from, in terms of county, what their contribution to the county by keeping their.
So they don't, they don't count it that way at all.
Okay, but NICO Solid Waste is another story.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if NICO Solid Waste.
I've never heard the word equalized, anything.
Usually.
But maybe that's just what I'm.
That's fine, that's fine, but also.
I've never even thought to ask you that.
But also, you've got, probably needs to rec, needs to recognize, uh, maybe a few words on the state's requirements regarding evaluation, we get to certain levels, we don't have a choice.
That's right, we, we're not allowed to go under seventy percent without penalty or above a hundred percent.
So it's a judgment zone in between, it's asking what you play with, it's, it's, it's a balance act, it's not black and white, it's very good.
Yeah, and, and, and right now, I mean, and the logic is this, I mean, they're saying, you're only taxing your residents on ninety percent of their value, so therefore, we're only gonna give you ninety percent of benefits.
Right, right.
So you're, you're trying to find the spot where we don't torture our citizens, and yet get the most out of, you know, trying to find that balance with this.
What's, like, for the people that just bought houses?
We usually weren't tortured of it.
I mean, I'd say, we're, we're looking to do the thing that's the least financially difficult for them. So if the financially, if they lose out financially by us having, like, not being at a hundred percent in terms of reduced homestead exemptions, which hurts the year-round residents most of all, um, then we wanna do, you know, if, if that's more harmful to residents than, um, the alternative, then we wanna, you know, get to a ratio where they're getting enough homestead exemption that, you know, they're not financially disadvantaged.
The homestead exemption is gonna decrease more than their, than their taxes would increase.
Yeah.
Homestead exemption is exemption of valuation.
Correct.
It's not exemption of taxes.
Well, but, like.
It's an exemption of the val, of the taxable value of property.
Yeah, but what's homestead, twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not huge.
Yeah.
Be careful of that, it's not that, proportionally, it's not that huge.
Some people think like.
Well, if you're, yeah, a little value. You can, you.
Yes.
You, yeah, it's just, you know, thirty bucks a month, forty bucks a month, but, um.
It really hurts the people that, well, I don't.
Well, fundamentally, here, if you have a home that's, has been evaluated through fifty, in this market, drives to five hundred thousand dollars, that's a bite, that's a huge bite on anybody, so going to ninety-two percent brings that five hundred down.
Absolutely.
Quite a bit, so the bite, the bite is still there, it's not a big.
But it's not a bite if everybody's goes up, and we don't rate, and we don't increase spending. It doesn't do anything to their, if everybody's value goes up and we don't increase spending, then it doesn't.
No, no.
It's not gonna, it just changes how it's all distributed, it's not like.
If you have a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home, and you're right, if everybody's, all evaluations, you know, will often, the mill rate comes down a portion, a portion. But, say the mill rate comes down ten percent, and your valuation is at twenty-five percent, you pay more taxes, even without increasing the town and the school's budget.
Right.
It's, it's unfortunately, it's, I think, it's, it's kind of a, and that people have this all the time. My home doesn't have a new kitchen, the one next door does, and they get into this, you know, valuation, when this valuation at the level I presume from the money, is a mar, uh, market competitive sales kind of an evaluation.
Exactly.
So if my next door neighbor sells their home for five hundred thousand dollars more than my, which my taxes go up substantially.
It averages, so if that's an outlier, no, it's not, if it's, if it's a common thread, yes, it is.
Okay, but a common thread in the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's comp sales.
It, absolutely.
Which is, which is, is, can be really distorted.
But we, we average that, on that, on that hand that I gave you. First number I have there is number of sales.
Oh, actually, yeah.
So all of these averages are made like that first year, that lets up to four, forty, forty, that's based on a hundred meters of sales.
I see.
So that, that, that five hundred thousand dollar increase, but in your neighbor, is gonna come into that pool.
Oh, sure.
Sure, so it's not gonna jerk you up five hundred thousand, but it is gonna bring the average.
It's, yeah, it's gonna bring the average of the neighbor up.
Right.
But not, I, I, but that's, the, the math is, is, just you have to remember, there's, there's, after an evaluation, there's two things that are gonna hurt you in taxes, one is your valuation going up more than the total valuation went up in the town.
Yeah.
Because that's what happens to the neighbor.
That'd be right.
Then, secondly, yes, if we, next year, increase the twenty-three budget next, the twenty-three budget by two percent is another one, it adds on to it, so. Yeah, I'd worry, and, uh, I would worry more if we were at ninety-eight percent about the middle-range homes, because I feel like we're driving the middle, the middle-income people out of the town, and that's a, that's a huge concern that I have. Um, because people, middle-income ranges are gonna get a very difficult time unless there's a big bubble to afford to live in general.
But we're not driving them off.
No, 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 no.
They're choosing to.
The economy is.
The constitutional mandate that we assess its market value.
I understand, yeah, I'm not suggesting you're.
The state constitution?
Yes.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Yep.
That'd be a better way to do a lot of state stuff, um.
Oh, you think?
I, I can't tell you how many taxpayers have told me that.
Well, the taxpayers in California do.
Well, unfortunately, we're still relying on the property tax.
It's.
Right, exactly.
Essential services.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and we're a minimum receiver, so, it's just, the state isn't helping us with paper schools either.
Well.
And this is, this is not unique to Camden, every single community in Maine is struggling with the same thing.
Our neighborhood towns are struggling the same thing right now.
I mean, I, the city of Avesta, they, their assessor gave a presentation very similar to what Carrie's giving you all now, and they almost word for words said the exact same things that all of you are saying now, worried about the same group of people in the market.
Absolutely, and that's why I come back to, I honestly think it's quite comfortable to be, uh, aggressive enough to say, let's do ninety-two, ninety-three, because I've heard assessors say, no, I think ninety-six, ninety-seven's probably safer.
That's a lot.
I, I'm telling you, I know it'll happen, it'll, it'll disrupt that middle-income group whose homes averages have gone up quite a bit.
Right.
Can we go over the benefits then again?
Sorry.
Can we go over the benefits of doing anything?
I'm having to do it all, or?
Yeah, because we, I've got the, the, the homestead exemption thing, how much money are people really saving?
The, the, the benefit is this, if we don't at least equalize to some ratio, that can be, that's, like, we don't equalize, our, our assessments are not defensible.
Sure.
Somebody comes to me with a debate, and they say, that person's only paying sixty percent of their property value with taxes, and I'll pay eighty percent, they win.
Do we have that?
Another way of looking at it too is, um, because, you know, most of you here, uh, went through the redow in twenty-seventeen, and that was a big shock for a lot of people, because it had been done since two thousand four.
Correct.
Um.
Still hasn't.
And that was sort of one thing that everyone, you know, everyone sort of agreed going forward that, you know, it's better if we make these adjustments on a more consistent basis, so that we don't, you know, get ten years down the line and are forced to kind of, you know, readjust everything, and then give everyone huge shocks. And I mean, I think we're all trying to read tea leaves a little, because we don't know what's going to happen with the real estate market, um.
And I, and I did adjustments in two thousand nineteen.
Right.
And again, it was a shock.
Well.
Heard the problem is Camden is too desirable, I mean, this idea that we need to continue to attract more people here, and we have to market ourselves and all that stuff, it's kind of, I mean, it's just kind of crazy, because we're at these out-of-control values, um.
Another point to remember, which I highlight for the public, is your, your suggestion of preserving a hundred eighty thousand dollars over the next few years, so in two thousand twenty-seven, I think you're saying we should actually do for the first time since two thousand four, a full reevaluation, because this is not a full reevaluation.
It's a statistical update.
A statistical update based on comp sales. A full evaluation, a reevaluation is much more problematic.
That's what we did last.
That's really, that's really the.
We call it a measuring list, we go measure each house, and then we go inside and.
Why two thousand twenty?
Should've given us time to save up the money. The sooner it's better, I mean.
I, 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 I was gonna say, um, I, I wouldn't let our decision based on raising a hundred and eighty, because I think the negative impacts by two thousand twenty-seven would be much larger, we should be looking at two thousand twenty-five. No, I, I, it shouldn't be delayed.
Um.
You wanna do that now?
I didn't have now.
Yes, that was just a lot that you just said there, um. We're saving up to go measure everybody's houses?
We're saving up to do a full reevaluation or definition, this is not a full reevaluation.
Revaluation?
This, this, we are doing a revaluation, evaluation in December, which is based on comp sales. That's the data they use to determine what your.
I under, I understand that, that's because the neighbor down the street sold their house for a hundred thousand dollars more than it was worth then.
Carrie is saying, as you bring money aside, do, that's, is, by definition, a full reevaluation, which is house by house, picture by picture, kind of a much more expensive thing than suggesting the two is a hundred eighty thousand. What that does, in my opinion, is gives a, a better, more level playing field for the differences between me and mine.
Exactly, exactly.
Sure, but we already have a process where when a house changes hands, or property changes hands, and there's, there's a sold for price, do we readjust to that value?
No, but we figured, but, but.
That's the part that we should definitely do, because those people knew what they were doing, they should pay.
That's what they do in Texas, but I don't worry, that's not Maine law, Maine law is, we do it the way, it's the way I'm doing it.
And, and Maine, and Maine law, and Proposition thirteen has not been an overall winner.
Yeah.
It's, it's for the state, I guess, but it's.
Can you, you're speaking with a level of knowledge that's not.
Proposition thirteen is what exactly.
Is that in California or in Maine?
California, Maine, no, we don't have, proposition thirteen is basically, when I sell my homes for four hundred thousand, that is my taxes until the house is sold again, it never goes up.
If you go up like three percent.
I get, well, there's some, there's some very limited, one or two percent or whatever, but basically, that's why people in California, I know many of them, whose homes are worth two and three million more, and their houses are valued at four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, I can clearly see that that's probably, but.
Two houses are exactly like next door.
Yeah, yeah.
One just sold a million dollars, this one never sold since, since it got built, and it's twenty-five thousand.
So that's the other end of the extreme.
Yes.
But you're saying that when you don't update the value of any individual property based on, based on a sale?
Goes into the averages, so when we do this statistical update, each sale will get put into what we call a strat. And the strat is, for example, and we keep going down, so we start out with all sales in town, and we go single-family homes, separate, uh, single, single-family home, uh, residential.
Yeah, yeah.
Then single-family homes, condos, then waterfront, salt, freshwater.
Right.
Then mountain view, we keep on going down until we don't have any data.
Yeah.
Sure, but does that happen only when we agree to do what is being presented here, to do this blah, da, 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 da thing? You don't do that at all?
No, no.
And that is based on a law?
Based on a law.
A law, that, that you cannot update the property, the.
It, 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 it's based on Supreme Court decisions that say, that say, everybody has to be assessed equally. It's equity trumps value, so as long as everybody is assessed equally, and by equally, that means that everybody's at the same percentage ratio.
Right.
So that's what we're equalizing to.
But Allison's question is more basic than that, she actually had a good question about, if I sold my home in July
Yeah.
to somebody else, so the increased value, will that affect the new person's taxes in July?
I swear I have an email from you that says something different, but I must, it's, um, because I.
I get it, I get it, it's, it's complicated.
Well, that is wrong, I mean.
Yeah, that's why people say, that's why Proposition thirteen, for.
That's the other end of the, I'm not saying we should go there, but it, that's telling me that the very, for somebody that wants to just live their normal life in Camden, and just thinks everything's kind of just fine, I'm, I'm not one of those people that's wanting anything to change, but, you know, they're just like, let's just keep going, sort of the way it is, and I don't really care about how much my home is worth, or, I, I don't, it, the person that just bought something for that value should be immediately paying that if, if ever there was a certain case of like, that person should pay for that amount in taxes, because we know that.
And there are models like that, not Maine.
Yeah.
Can't we just do that and then readjust every so often too, and you're not allowed to?
We would, I mean, one of the things I'm very proud of is that we have never gone to court. We would be in court, we'd be in court.
But I think Allison's point, we really should write letters to, emails to our senator and congressman to say, change the rules in Maine.
Yeah.
That's what we have to do.
Because the Maine Municipal Association isn't doing a good job, their people are lobbying on behalf of towns all the time, and it's not necessarily anything to help them, just like to have a better sense of how we could change laws, and people will say, shouldn't you tax the Airbnbs at a higher, the short-term rental should be taxed at a higher rate, well, they are written, we're not allowed to do that other than by means of that homestead exemption, and letting people, you know, take the exemption, but we're not allowed to say there's a ten percent increase of your short-term rental, right? Right, no.
Right, I think, I, Allison's right, I, I think.
Well, but if we did make them register and find out their businesses,
Yep.
there's business equipment tax, and then Carrie can also apply the, um, revenue model when he's assessing them as well.
Sure.
If it's an income-producing property.
Right.
An income-producing property would have much more value than just a residential property.
No, and you're also dealing with, uh, deep depreciation, and, and it's kind of complicated.
And personal property.
Right.
I mean, that, that, that would all be taxable.
But, funny.
Well, that's an important, that's a really important point right there.
Well, I mean, that's part of the whole, if, like, the registration process and knowing how many we have and where they are.
Right.
That we can't do any of.
Without that, without that, I'm, I'm cherry-tipping, which is not allowed.
Yeah.
Right, right, that makes.
But I think.
That makes a lot of sense, but that's, we're kind of other things first.
Yeah, but to this point, Terry's looking for is a proposal for KRT for maximum twenty four thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I don't think we have much choice but to. Move it, my thing.
I think you probably have a fair amount of choice and that I don't yet feel I understand it well enough. And that's my own problem, but I can't articulate to somebody exactly what we're doing and why. I need a little bit more discussion.
We did the re-evaluation and it actually was just another statistic. Love that. Oh, that time Rob, Kate and I visited each house.
Yep.
And we did windshield.
Yep.
And.
Right, that's, okay.
Yeah, so we're doing less this time.
Right.
I was gonna say, you didn't get off measuring tape, but I knew you drove by my house, so I was confused about which one that was, um.
But anyway, at that time, one of the, one of the, I put together a presentation, one of the things I showed was the waterfront homes were paying sixty two percent.
Right, that's what got them.
Right. And like Pearl Street was like paying eighty five percent.
Right, it was really unfair.
And so what we did was we brought sixty two percent up to ninety five and we brought the eighty five up to ninety five. So Pearl Street rose, but not as much as, um, as they did.
And a lot of people's taxes actually went down.
They did.
It did.
That was, it would all work out really.
The axiom is that a third will go down, a third will stay the same and a third will.
And the ones that go up are still in the street.
Yes.
Those are the ones that go up, yep, are still in the street. And that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Question is, if we don't make this decision now and it goes beyond, well, in which December we're making the decision, it's going to be, um, what's that gonna do to us?
And we are a resident now.
Well, the decision about KRT.
Well, it, it, it doesn't allow me to do this.
Right.
But if, if you put the decision off till December, which still be, okay, we can do this in January if it's assuming that KRT has a time. But my thinking is right now is that we will do the statistical work in December.
Right. Um, for application in January, February, before the, before the, uh,
Before we can do.
The April, the April calculation taxes.
Yeah, I figured we would have the years probably.
What do you do in places where there haven't been enough sales for there to be comps? Cause I'm, it's, there are some sections of town right now that I look at and I think that there's no way, you can see sale price was this and they, or like recently there was just, well, I'm not gonna get into it, but like one building that finally changed hands in this area of town that hadn't had any building changes.
Right.
And it showed just how off it was, but so what do you do? How do we make sure that's fair?
We, we divide a town up into neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it's, but it's not geographical neighborhoods, your economic profile neighborhoods. So we do just, let's just say, for example, you're talking about something in a rural area where there are few sales. And that might be enabled for forty or maybe. You wanna be specific, I'll answer.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm slowly getting smarter, um.
So there, there might be similar properties to that, even if it's not right next door. And we'll group those into, into a strata. And, and do the math on that. If, if we don't.
Cause it's actually, I've heard it, in rural areas, I have heard, heard in people because then they couldn't refinance because like they're it was basically their like value didn't go up even though it should have because everybody's just holding like so valuable that everybody in that neighborhood decided to hold on.
Yeah, yeah. The, the most difficult conversation I had was with a person who has, let's say, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house one day and after something like this, it's three hundred twenty five thousand.
Easily.
And that's a tough conversation to have.
Cause it's fifty percent increase.
Yeah, and, and.
That's a lot. It's the nature of the beast and unfortunately we're stuck with the beast, but, um.
But it doesn't hurt when it's if everybody, if that happens to everybody. Then it doesn't really hurt because it's just everybody's going up and, and as long as we keep spending the same.
No, no, here was the, you're on the, in the model I said, in that case, the house went up fifty percent, there's no way in God's creator, uh, one point four billion is gonna go up to two point one billion. You have to make that equalize. It doesn't happen. So if that house goes up fifty percent and the total valuation is up fifteen percent, the difference between those two is what's gonna be the increased cost to that one.
Which means it's never possible that the average for the town would go up fifty percent, like the, the value for the
Oh, boy.
Because of all those really expensive properties that aren't gonna go from being a one million dollar property to a two million dollar property. A lot of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will become that.
My, my, my read of the upper end market is, has not risen that much.
That's why I heard the proportional share that they have to pay. This is complex math that I think everybody.
Know it is.
So, so, so my question is you're trying to protect as many people as you can and yet still stay within the legal limits that we have to work. Do I read that right?
Yes, uh, trying not to hurt people for sure. Protect, trying to protect a town's, um, valuation integrity.
Try not to go to court.
Yeah.
Well, and, and make sure we're assessing people equally. That's the
That's right.
biggest job that Kerry has is making sure that his assessments are equal.
Kerry, everybody, I mean, um, our trade magazine is called Fair and Effective. That's what this is all about.
Based on the way the main state constitution has established that.
Well, let me, let me go back to my question now. We have a situation where, you know, as I understand it, Bob, this talked about it. Really expensive houses haven't gone up that much.
Not as much.
It's been the, the, the low and medium houses that have gone up the most.
Correct.
So those are the people that are gonna get hurt.
Possibly.
Possibly the most by a tax increase.
By a re-evaluation.
How will this, how will this affect them?
They will have a property that's worth more than it was before.
Well, that, that's obviously, but you know, I, I, I'm looking for, what I'm looking for is, you know, we don't wanna put, you know, we get letters every time the stuff goes up. You know, I want to retire here, I'm on fixed income and I can't stay here anymore. I don't wanna get those letters. I mean, there's something, there, there's not much you can do about it because the property values have gone up.
Yes.
But I wanna make sure that we try and protect some of those people as best we can.
That's where.
That's what the ninety two.
That's what, okay, that's, that's, that's my question is that's what you're trying to do.
It is enough, we don't know, but it could be worse, Mark, but that's what is, that's what I said right off the bat, the ninety two, ninety three percent is pretty aggressive.
Yeah.
Um, because you typically find sessions with ninety seven.
Yeah, so that's, so that is what you're trying to do is you're, you're concerned about those people and, you know, we don't wanna chase them all out of town because then it's just gonna be the land of billionaires and.
We're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to do this in a way that's minimal.
Okay, okay. Then in that case, then are they gonna make a motion that we approve the proposal for re-evaluation of KRT for re-evali- re-evalue, re-evaluation services for the town, Cam?
The, if we were doing the minimum, the, the minimum, a second for discussion purposes, um. If, if we are wanting to do then I, I see a disconnect between the conversation that I just heard happen between what you were saying, Mark, and we kind of got it clear that, okay, the people that are gonna suffer the most are gonna be the people that have the less valuable houses now, so let's try to help them suffer, uh, you know, the least possible and we're gonna choose ninety two percent. The state law is seventy percent is the minimum. And so why are we choosing? I, I, I need more convincing that ninety two percent is a beneficial number and because going to court, I don't know, uh, I'm not as scared of that or it seemed like we just really clearly established that this is gonna be more detrimental for the lower valued houses, so.
If, if we don't, if we don't equalize, I mean, if we don't equalize, we are, we are, we not only go to court, we lose. We're not being fair to everybody. Now, now, I'll tell you this, it's it's really not my decision how much revenue we bring in. What my responsibility is, again, everybody be assessed equally and fairly compared to one another. Whether we go seventy percent or a hundred percent is a decision that I would make with Audra. Uh, as far as what kind of revenues the town needs.
Well, but the state border of equalization is gonna regulate the not, I, I never see a state that will allow you to go with point seven five. They're not gonna allow you to do that because you're not equalizing.
Intentionally, get down. We don't go from what we are at now.
Remember this, remember, you remember the conversation we had at the previous, like, where did I wanna bring up again? It's very important. When we talked about last year's taxes and we were debating about utilizing our, our surplus, un, un, undesignedated surplus. And I said, no, don't use it now because we may need it in two thousand twenty two for exactly this reason. So to your point, Allison, if we see these impacts, we, we have potentially a power tool of bringing down the mill rate even lower than the drop it has from, uh, just to get increasing valuation. We, we have, we have some.
We're seeing new value every year that are just based on projects that are happening.
I, I understand, I understand, but we, let's say our, our increase in taxes goes up, we don't control the schools, I'm sorry, I can't do that. The town, we, we tune it two and a half percent. We can, we can affect that by using, this town has a very decent surplus. And I'm not suggesting we use it all, but we didn't use more last year for exactly that reason, which I stated during the meeting when, when Taylor was sitting in that chair and saying some of the same things. I think we have some ways of beyond the, uh, re-evaluation of minimizing the potential impact of this very.
Sure, yeah.
And that's what we're gonna have to use. I don't, I, I don't see that we have any substantial choice but to do the re-evaluation.
Many other towns make the choice to stay farther away from. And I'm not saying I'm not gonna get to the point where, because generally Cherry's explanations and what you end up with is the best thing to do. I've never actually found that I don't come to the same conclusion. Once I understand it completely and you're really amazing at taking the time to do that and you explain things really, really well, so um, I'm not like admonishing you or anything, I just want to, you know, the last time I got to the point where I could like write things in the paper that explained the process and I felt like I've really understood it and I'm not there right now in terms of who's gonna benefit from this.
I would just be cautious to, if we delay the decision on this and put it out in time, it's not gonna get better, it could get worse.
We're definitely.
What would get worse?
We are, I mean.
The difference.
Yes.
I mean, but the, sure.
Eighty one, yeah. Eighty seven.
Eighty one percent in three weeks. Careful, which, which defer this, all I'm saying is careful before this decision. However, we could trying to think of a way of approving this expenditure and then coming back with, uh, a little more detailed presentation on the matter. Um, but at least we'd be reserving the time of KRT in December.
Well, I mean, you need to do the work no matter what you decide to do with the information. Like what, I mean, getting more information is never a bad thing. So I, I think that's a good point where the, it's an important thing to do.
We do, and because KRT does something we don't have to.
So how about like going through the exercise of getting the information, figuring out what this is going to mean for who and then.
Yeah.
It's twenty four thousand dollars though, can't we just have her pay a tax or something?
Benches. No, I think that's smart, that's a good idea, Audra, I, that's true.
I mean, and a lot of this, we're speculating about who's going to get, who's going to benefit and who's not.
That's a really great, that.
So instead, instead of speculating about who's going to benefit and who isn't, why don't we get the information to find out what the actual impact?
Yeah, I think that's true. That would be the qualification on the, on the motion that they do.
I, I agree.
We should let her talk more during meetings sooner and, um.
I have, I have, tell me this is.
No, yeah, that was very, that was very helpful, I thought, thank you.
Any questions, Matt?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the twenty four five based on what we just said to bring it back and, uh, yeah, let's see what the meat on the bone looks like.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I wanna vote on this in paper. Three, opposed. Do you want me to revote? You can't bully her. No, she said no, it's fine.
I didn't say no, you made me say no. I wanted to, I didn't get to the point where the motion and the second, and I was gonna ask a question, but.
Discussion, right.
Yeah, I felt like that's a little thing I suggested, but I.
It's either there's a motion and a second and I think it's open for discussion.
I did, I had no discussion and I said, I said, any more discussion, I said, all those in favor, and they're going to be all, so we, do we make more season, we move, we move, we vote again?
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask about this idea that we don't have to implement this. I just wanted to clarify. It was, I, what I think I just heard is that the select board has real power to, to choose.
I heard you tell people you don't have that.
So every so often, every so often we identify one of these areas where we actually have power. One of them was making Central Street one way. We weren't even allowed to send that out. Um, like, so did we just, is this, this is another category where the select board chooses the, what is it that we get to, at the end of this KRT thing, what are we gonna get to decide to do? We're not doing?
You're gonna, you're gonna see.
Reject their findings, um.
We could even change ninety two, ninety three percent.
We get to do that.
I will, I will put together a presentation that shows you how we re-bow will affect towns.
I don't recall ever voting on in the past on a.
You're, you're grabbing some power.
Okay, I was just saying, um, so if we don't actually have power to do that later, it feels like we may have just been not.
I'm not, no, no, we're gonna be very transparent with you about this. So Kerry is the assessor, he's got all the authority in the world to be like, this is what I'm gonna do and this is how I'm gonna do it. Um, he doesn't have to come back to you for approval.
Nope.
But what I think we're committing to tonight, because you're approving this funding with the understanding that he is going to come back to you.
Yes.
And say, this, these are my findings.
These are my recommendations.
And I think he's going to come to you and ask as the people who are elected by the citizens of Camden to make decisions in their best interest. He will ask for input as to
Input to.
What, what do you wanna do now that we have this information? Is that what we're, we're, uh, here, I'm committing to you right now by saying this.
And that, that's not fun. I have your authority to set the mill rate.
I thought so.
I always consult with.
Exactly. Kerry is very collaborative.
But Allison's point, we don't have the right to disprove that.
You don't.
I, yeah, thank you. I didn't think so, um.
And you're, you're in an unusual situation in terms of the economics at this point in terms of real estate.
There's no question in that.
This is an opportunity because there's so many questions on the street about what's my mill rate gonna be, what's my tax gonna be? Um, especially when you're seeing your neighbor's house, which was last week three hundred thousand dollars, literally on my neighbor's like eight hundred thousand dollars. What the hell is that gonna do to?
Yeah, it's scary.
It's really scary. So again, in terms of this uncharted territory in terms of fluctuation in middle state and also in terms of the concern of a common man and common woman and common person.
Yeah.
In terms of what this moved due to our taxes, I think it's justified or in some way could be appreciated if you would come back.
Yeah, I think it'd be great because like I had some strategies that were, were here and what it did was the higher percentages and they, what that did was forced out the middle income.
Yeah.
And made it for a wealthy community only versus what you're proposing here and other measures we discussed can forestall that event.
Right, and when he has this information, he can come back and say, okay, if we, if we're trying to certify at ninety two, this will be the impact on these, on this neighborhood, this group, whatever it is versus at ninety one versus eighty eight, whatever, whatever the case may be, so. Yeah, but he, he can't answer that until he's done this for.
Yeah, and what's a benefit to the community is it takes it out of the abstract.
Right.
Yeah, we have to do that, in my opinion. Uh, we, we have to address it and keep addressing it. And that's what we'll do, we'll address it after KRT.
More people understand.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I just have a feeling that what's gonna happen is we're gonna do that and then the presentation that will be made to us is, it will, it'll get back to that court thing. And they'll say that we need to be able to defend this in court and but I'm just trying to.
Separate in your mind, equalization in the.
Um.
There are two different things.
Everything.
But if we decide, oh no, I think we wanna stay at seventy eight, what are we at right now?
Right, right now. Well, no, right now we're at eighty, but I'd say we're on our way to seventy seven. That's what we'll be in, in, in next year. Seventy seven.
Right.
And there's no, and that's what the data says, there's no way to change that. So we're on our way down. And, but that's, that's a different decision. Everybody has to be equal. They could be equal at seventy percent or they could be equal at ninety two percent, but everybody has to be at that same percentage.
Right.
That's, that's, that's not the, I'm not giving you that option. I am, I am saying that we will discuss what level of assessment everybody's at, but everybody's gonna be the same.
It's complicated.
I think I would like the town to have like a, a staging, construction, construction sta- staging sites for me, right in my neighborhood. There are things we could do to protect certain neighborhoods from out of control.
I'm gonna go slum up my house.
I have one question, go ahead, one question for Kerry.
Yeah.
Oh, do you want her to redo the vote before we?
Oh.
Oh yeah, I'm not sure that we did vote.
We didn't.
We did.
Miss Flinch did, I didn't. I know, I, I know, but I think, yeah, if you ever come up to us with the data is great. Because this is the person, the state board of legalization has the right to do exactly as well. We can't tell him, but he can certainly bring the data back and we can chew on it.
We're like an advisor to commit.
Kerry, Kerry always does what he promises to do, and if he's saving, he can come back.
So, Mark has a different question, so I'm gonna call for a vote in motion to the table, all is in favor. Four, zero, if Sophie's not available, I believe, now, Mark, you have a question?
I do have a question, and Kerry, just to go back, um, three years, four years, five years ago, um, it had been said that you were gonna transfer over to Rockport and Kevin was gonna become our assessor.
I never heard.
I've never heard.
No, no.
No, you've been drinking.
Never.
Seriously?
No.
Well, it's maybe because he became the Rockport town manager for a brief period. That might have been.
Even back three years ago.
I read it on paper, I was like, what?
We have one more item that you wanted us to get to, which was.
Yes.
Lincolnville wants to have a meeting to discuss. Sorry, say it later. But Lincolnville's been asking for me to discuss something to do with the West Dan.
I think both of them.
Okay, um, you wanna schedule a workshop?
Um, yeah, anytime you're all available.
Whoa, 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 what's the workshop gonna be about?
I think, I mean, if I have to be honest, I think it'll be a bit of air and grievances.
Okay, that's okay.
And then, uh, they'll want to talk about what's the, what's the status of the dam committee? Because that's a.
Oh.
Joint, yeah, joint Lincolnville Camden.
Yeah.
Committee, and then they'll wanna talk about decisions around, um, you know, capital um, improvements that are made to the dams and how those decisions get made. And then they'll want to talk about, um, maintenance and what the schedule is for maintenance.
So.
But we might wanna talk about some things too, like lake levels and, you know, there's, we are just.
And I think they're gonna wanna talk about that too, policies around, like, lake levels and drawdowns and.
So what I wanna recommend is that they provide an agenda and what they'd like to talk to, to an extent possible.
How about, how about we also, because I.
Oh yeah, I agree.
I'm, I'm excited actually to talk to them about this, I don't think it's.
I, no, it's not, I just wanna make sure, I don't wanna walk in a meeting and let's find out what we're gonna talk about, we're gonna walk in knowing.
Katie and I can work together.
That now, if there's anything in terms of the position on either side, if there's such a thing, there should also be a pact if, if there is such a thing.
Yeah, I, I think there's gonna be all kinds of. You know, there are policies that Dave Bolstich follows around drawdowns and when they're done and how they're done.
And we should put those in the package, so they have it before that workshop, it's just common courtesy that both sides, they're rather than walk in, let's talk about capital improvements, well, what about them, we have to do them.
Right.
So, so if you, you and Dave could also talk about what should be included in the package, they help us, and then in this workshop to be a little bit, sometimes bite on before we go in the.
I mean, we have to remember too that all, a, a, a large part of the water that flows into downtown Camden comes from Lincolnville, and so.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, we really should be doing a little bit of like higher level regional planning about land use and um, you know, every time they make more parking lots and create better drainage and do different things, that's all water that we have to.
Okay, so let's give a couple of dates, okay, a couple of dates. Was just a date, um, in December, no, December, okay?
I am fine with whatever.
I suggest that we get the thirteenth. Um, again, we had this debate about, I don't think it should be in the evening, and by the way, it's been, we should be. I don't know this.
Maybe we cannot, like, let's, let's work with them, um, I'm happy to go to Lincolnville too, it might be nice to get. Oh, well.
And it might be a nice gesture for all of you to be.
No problem at all.
Yeah.
How about, um, I suppose I'll just start.
I'm gonna look at their meeting calendar now.
Don't they meet on Mondays?
They do, yeah.
So I would suggest December fourteenth.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Tuesday, at that date too.
Sometimes, oh.
No, select words is seven and the twenty-first.
Meeting on the thirteen.
Okay, have them on the fourteenth, anytime between eleven and one. Or this, this sixteenth, anytime between eleven and one.
I like mornings.
All right, that's, well, which day?
It's not my favorite, because I've been.
If on the fourteenth, like, the fourteenth, I can do, uh, anytime from noon to three. About eleven to three. To start the meeting.
I can sometimes do after three, but if it's the two-thirties pickup time, that is awesome.
You can, I just don't make sure. This is a one-hour meeting or a two-hour meeting, but I can do three to four on, on the six, on the thirteen. On fourteen, Tuesday, the fourteenth from three, I'll just suggest three to four. Or the sixteenth, that can't be three to four for me, it has to be, um, eleven to or ten to. Let's see what day, yeah, available, and then we can play with it, we have.
So fourteen to the sixteenth is the other one?
Yeah.
What time on the sixteen?
Oh, anytime between ten and two.
I mean, and they might, if, if, if they need an evening meeting, which I'm guessing, you know.
Okay, that's fine.
I think, I mean, I'm, I understand that they, I know some of them are gonna have. It's usually lunch, but.
Well, I'm gonna look at Monday evening.
That's the.
Tuesday evening, uh, Tuesday meeting though, at, at five.
Okay.
Because one, Allison's right, one member, he has to work all day like Mark, and the rest of you do. I don't, um, a little bit two o'clock in the morning, but anyway.
Would you, um, would you be willing if maybe they wanna do it prior to their select board meeting? And if they're able?
Well, I would just worry about the one person who doesn't have the time, but that's fine.
Six thirty, and we, if we wanted to meet at five, if you say, I don't know what.
Well, I'm just trying to be fair and give enough time, you know, an hour goes by pretty fast, again, to my question about what's the agenda? It's gonna give us an idea of how much time we might need, but yes, that, that'll be acceptable to me on the sixth, no, on the thirteenth. Let us know, and if, you know, we, we have to adjust, like, you know, that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Or who knows, maybe they'll even be fine having you as part of the select.
I'm just readjusting those.
Let's, let's finish up with our select board report, Allison, you have to buy me a U vote first.
Well, I thought we were gonna talk about the conservation commission, but I was, that right into my select board report. So, uh, yeah, uh, select board, um, reports, um, our transfer station manager, I don't exactly have anything on screen to show that's related to that, but it kinda looks like I do. Um, our transfer station manager, um, Michael Martinez was, uh, awarded the transfer station manager of the year by the Main Resource Recovery Association, which, um, is really awesome, and they, they really recognized him for some of his innovative waste diversion programs. He, um, just jumped right into the job, got a grant from the D E P to start, um, pulling things, especially lawn mowers and other small engines out of the waste stream and fixing them, making available to public. Um, uh, so that is, is really awesome, um, the swap shop is now closed for the season. Just met with, um, oh, some of the volunteers. Um, they had a great year, so it was nice to have that back, we're involved in a lot of conversations about how we can expand that hopefully and maybe make it year-round in, um, the future. Um, other waste diversion news, um, I participated in, um, an event at the high school, actually, through, um, one of their hatchery programs, based on an event called Radical Reuse. And, uh, it was really, it's just awesome, um, I I had heard that there was some kind of a sustainability fair, um, and thought, oh, I've been to those before. And, uh, it was, it was really full, what they're doing at Hatchery, they've got this, um, new coordinator, um, who's really done a great job engaging with the community. Tia Anderson was there talking about Habitat for Humanity and what they do with, um, demolition and salvaging, and there was a speaker from Oregon who was instrumental in passing, um, a deconstruction ordinance, basically saying that homes that are, buildings that are built in, um, I think it's nineteen forty or earlier. Um, it have to be deconstructed rather than demolished, and the idea of that is that they're all about old growth lumber that is part of those, those old homes is extremely valuable to furniture makers and craftsmen, and so um, they really created like this whole industry out of it, um, that was really interesting to listen to, and so lots of good stuff going on there, um, the cemetery committee has been working on stone restoration. They have a plan for tackling that sort of section by section, um, and so it's great to see that they um, really worked hard to figure out how Mountain View Cemetery especially, um, which is really old and has a lot of challenges, um, the idea is to tackle section by section, get all those stones readable again and repaired, and so they're making a lot of progress there, and then, um, just, uh, I can share this, um, more later, but I did, um, uh, went through and looked at all of the, um, references in the comprehensive plan to the conservation commission, um, some of the things that I've done a lot of over the past um, several years that I've had key to the town office, um, have been going in and scanning old documents and reading things. And, um, this is actually, there's a lot of really impressive work that's been done, um, before. One of them is with trees, um, so like this binder here is, these are, this was their treats, treat tree inventory from, um, nineteen ninety-six, I believe, and it goes through all, it's really, I mean, it's really cool to see all the Camden trees and what they look like in nineteen ninety-six, all the trees, this binder here is just an extraordinary piece of work. It is the Camden Community Forest Management Plan, um, and from nineteen ninety-five. And it was really sort of like the foundation of Camden Shade Tree Ordinance, um, that's the, you know, that's the ordinance that, um, protects trees in the right of way, and there's the, this, it, it got us into this Tree City USA thing, and, um, there, it says in the comprehensive plan, um, among, you know, other things, that the, the, the conservation commission, um, is really supposed to be sort of the, the guardian of that program and create inventories, um, of the trees and help the tree warden, and, um, I'll, I'll send this document off to all of you, but, um, there are a number of things that the conservation commissions in the past put a lot of work into, like beginning the wetland mapping, um, system, for instance, and, um, there's, especially as we change, look at like changing ordinances to make subdivisions easier in certain parts of town. Um, the conservation commission, I think, can play an important role in helping to make sure that we've mapped out all of the things that are already in our comprehensive plan that say, you know, these are some of the special areas, for instance, that deserve um, protection, one of the things that they, it says is, um, uh, like mapping out the archaeological resources, in a lot of cases, the state has already done this, like these historic sites that are known to have Native American, you know, arrowheads and different things like that that have been found. We need to put that into our system so that when a construction project happens, um, there, it, it, it triggers like more of an archaeological review, what was, one of the things that was noted in the comprehensive plan is that um, that there's very little knowledge of what existed here prior to, um, what do they call it, uh, prior to the arrival of James Richards in the late seventeen sixties. Um, so it recommends like a, a townwide survey, looking for opportunities to be able to, to learn about, more about pre-European history. And, um, anyway, obviously, that's not all stuff that the conservation commission could tackle right away. But I think that there are, you know, as we talk about recruiting, um, members, that, um, really, the comprehensive plan is a great guide, and we know, um, one of the things that's come up a whole lot lately is this, is trees. Tree planting, tree inventory, um, we already do have a small group that's been kind of acting as an advisory group. Um, so that might be one thing that the commission could really focus on, and then continuing with, um, uh, a lot of the mapping that we've been doing in town, getting all this G I S stuff, um, and because we do, we're in a position where we could take, you know, volunteers to do a, a lot of that, you know, um, so I guess I would hope that maybe the select board could sort of support, um, you know, looking for conservation commission members that would be, um, you know, hopefully interested in, in especially those two things, and try to like check off some of those stuff that the comprehensive plan, um, addresses, rather than, um, I know when I got on the conservation commission at first, I was like, somebody had just told me, oh, it's, you know, to protect water or, or whatever, and I had a I, I remember being a little bored by the idea of mapping out all the areas of town and stuff, I was like, I just care about this one thing. And, and now I can really see, um, you know, more of the value of some of this stuff that's been banned.
Individual reach out, because if we ask for volunteers, it's.
Well, I think we could do two things, I think we could all, we all know that we, you know, different people that might be interested. But, um, I would like to offer to sort of polish up this document that I created. So we could, could put something out that says, these are, you know, these are some of the things that our comprehensive plan says that a conservation mission should be working on, and, um, some of it does need to be, you know, updated. I'm not saying they do every single thing exactly as it's, as it's said, but then. And then you guys can look at it, and then we put that out in addition to, as we're kind of, in addition to going out and recruiting people that we know kind of have these skills.
Exactly.
It's a good thing giving them a blueprint.
Yeah, it's, it's also something to recruit individuals, because we, if we just broadcast and we've done this too much now, many of them missions, we need to go do more of market. With, with, you're right, and maybe the person should have interest or capability in some of these, well, some in fact, players.
Right, um, yeah, and, and it's also the, like, there were things in just reviewing the comprehensive plan, even though I'd read it before, now with greater knowledge, when I look for these specific things, things jump out to me as, as important that maybe I would have missed in the past, so, um, it says, for instance, that there are a lot of, um, this survey should also include post-seventeen sixties farcets, especially in one heights or in mills, principally along the river near the sites of the present dam systems, um, and so just like identifying that that's a potential archaeological resource and. Anyway, um, I'm excited about it and we'll send something. Off to you all, and the, and the comprehensive, we just, they, they have done a really.
It's one of our organizations that have a committee, this one, we're required to have, this is a very.
The only thing I wanted to discuss really quickly is, is, um, a couple of letters to the select board, um, talking about, concerned about, you know, the, the dam structure and, you know, concerned about that we have five inches of rain um, last weekend, that did, I was hoping to see Dave stand on here to sort of get a fix on everything that happened in town, but I'm sure he's very busy. Um, and one of the things that I've been looking at is, is public safety's. And one of the things that I've been looking at is, because public safety is a big concern for me, is we had that much, but I wanted to put it in perspective, because that's, we saw amazing amounts of damage that we have not seen before, uh, just some perspective, when um, Hurricane Irene occurred towards Vermont, New Hampshire, instead of coming straight north and back in two thousand and eleven, uh, the two thousand and eleven storm dumped up to eleven inches of rain, destroyed nearly seven hundred fifty million dollars in property, um, so on and so forth. Hurricane Ida in New York, Staten Island achieved over eight inches of rain. Uh, in, in another comment, New York, um, in, in that storm, parts of the city received ten inches during the storm, Newark, which had a monthly average of four inches, received nine inches of rain, uh, just the last meeting, I mentioned, the week before, there've been major floods in Alabama, and they received as much as thirteen inches of rain, and that wasn't hurricane blow, that was just the rain in some, so. My concern is, we're starting to see rain events where people are getting double or triple the amount of rain that we got last weekend, and something, you know, that we need to think about, be aware of, you know, not just for the dams, but for everything else, are we prepared for those kinds of, of rain events?
Mr. Matt. Make it short. So um, David was kind enough to send us all photos from Route Fifty Two. Well, it's out, but no, again, there's a, um, I don't think those are out to the general public about the kind of damage that's already happened.
The witness has been paid for.
Was it? So.
Electronic.
Yeah, paperhead. The paper.
It has, it has some others.
Way more than what Dave sent us.
Yeah, um, and I will move on to the uh, next, um, Mark and I had a discussion about committees, and I think it would be good to revisit that, it's nice to see that the conservation uh, commission is back on the agenda, more for discussion, uh, I think it would be the best, I get a lot of emails about committees, so it'd be really. Might be time for a workshop in terms of something, something to your.
Okay.
Just to figure out, um, what, what we would like in terms of moving forward, what becomes a task, or task oriented, um, and what is a standing committee? I think there's some misunderstanding in town, Bob, about things like the planning board, or the zoning board, the shields, and the difference between that and C D A.
Sure.
Um, things that are uh, designed by charter to be standing committees, things that have active versus other types of committees, so I'm sure you may visit that.
I, in our regard, I know Barbara didn't do her job, and she prepared from the very startness with the cover creating responsibilities, and I know you sent that to the liaison, Sophie, um, for, you should send it to the rest of us in parallel, just so we have it, but I, and I admire Sophie to come back, but some ideas on, if there are any of those items that are hot or active, beyond the one you mentioned, which is steamboat, to, for, for consideration by the board. Um, so there is, there is some motion, piece by piece, just trying to see what barriers from our perspective might be for some of these over the.
And you really need to solve the question of membership.
Yeah, I know, we're, that's it, and we can't keep, and I can't on board.
I thought we had decided that they were gonna meet.
They are.
This is.
Yeah, but this is more of a long review.
But if we could get going with maybe one.
We could.
I still really wanna have a workshop with the existing members, I don't know if that's a.
Uh, was possible.
I really do think we have to go committee by committee, in order to do this well, and like, I hear what you're saying about just like a general discussion about committees, but we've kind of failed with that in the past, because it becomes like so many.
Yeah.
Things that we don't do a really good job at, I mean, I see, I see value in talking about committees in general, but also not letting that delay.
Yeah, I don't think, again, that needs to delay, the idea would be, um, that Mark and I discussed this idea of tiers, there, there's gotta be some kind of system put in place about, because I know the general public has no idea about what this is, why they come, why they don't come, what's important, what is charter, what's not.
All right, but man, man, I need to organize them in terms of like three different tiers, ones that are, you know, have to be uh, and, you know, meet all the time, planning board, running board of fields.
Yep.
Captain's Conservation Commission, then the next level, and then a third level.
Sure.
You know, separating so we can deal with them in, in groups, instead of trying to do it all at one time, but that was a really good idea.
It's a big, it's a big chapter, right, I have to change what's been happening disturbing for decades.
Well, some of these are just all in our heads that we know.
Yeah.
Like, okay, planning board is this and that, and, but it's, then you go on the town website, and it's like committees, and you see them all, some of them are, you got, it, it is, it is very confusing, um, and.
It, it's like the conservation commission, if Allison didn't do what Allison just did, we could sit around here going in circles, because we don't have a commission right now, that's a little different than the committees we do have, who they're wondering about what their agenda is, and, you know, it's much pointing, I agree with both, maybe there's some committees we just, you know, have standby, we're gonna need something, you know, and, or you're, you're more active on a monthly basis, because that's what's occurred at night, I mean, it's, it's, I'm convinced of it, there's a lot of things will be on a monthly basis, even when they don't have to. They just meet because they're, think they're exposed to meet, and to provide ideas to, that, that are going in their country, because, you know, we've got a lot in the plate, historically, then, one of the biggest frustrations was being rejected by the select board, when they brought good ideas to impress and inform us. So I.
Some might also like to just be, like, we could have them be, like, adva-, you know, advisory groups that are encouraged by the town, but they don't have to meet on our meeting schedule, or they don't have to follow, like, every single strict.
Or inform them for a specific project or purpose.
Exactly.
Then they, it's all the way after they're done.
That's where.
Like the parking.
That's where.
Maintenance. Right, and that would be a different category, right.
That's like Route One North, and that should get it there in the sun.
Um. So, yeah, to that point, I mean, so I said, we're just, I mean, we've got something, so this idea of creating the categories, so there's just not clarity in terms of how designation, it's not about priority, it's just in terms of.
Just that.
Charter.
Yeah, that's fine.
These things is what, you know, um. Um, about Navy Games, and there, there, there are folks who are doing work, so that might be in terms of some of the funds that are out there, that, I mean, they're just, it's ongoing work, that necessarily need to be in, according to committees, this work is.
Well, that's, that's what's key, for a lot of people, but I agree, send that to me, I'll take a look at it, and we can bring it forward, but, but it's getting really late, now.
Oh, yeah, I got, I do know stuff to tell you about, um. So I had to move forward with signing an uh, electricity purchase contract, there was just no way Knox County solar project was gonna be online in the next year or so, and then we went to um, a few different uh, companies to ask about, you know, potential buy-ins to uh, solar projects. And the idea is with revision particularly, they had a number of projects coming online, so, you know, we could transfer our net energy billing credits to the Knox County Solar Project, whenever that came online, nothing that they have is coming on any sooner than late in twenty twenty two. And we reached out to other um, you know, sort of installers or, you know, programs that we knew about to try to figure out, what was their solar program that we can buy into sooner, and there's just, none of them got back to us, and I agree, all the time, so I just had to sign a, a new agreement with Constellation for a year, so hopefully in a year's time, we'll be in a better position.
Directions, by drive as well.
A year.
Thank you.
So starting, beginning of November.
This is, this is not a race, but we gotta.
And natural gas prices are just going out of control, and that drives a whole bit of the wind in the energy market, so I was just very concerned that if we didn't sign something soon, we're, I mean, we're already paying more for electricity than we were last year, and that's inevitable.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, that's, I've moved forward with that, um, we just received word um, that we've received a four hundred eight thousand nine hundred something dollar grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for a number of projects on the snowball, the biggest ticket item being the energy efficiency upgrades to the snowmaking system, and there's also um, trail work that we'll be doing collaboratively with Post-Mountain Land Trust on the snowball property for around the mountain trail. And um, what's the other thing?
There's, there's a big chunk of money for that, involved. On that break this week.
No, it's the four hundred and eight thousand dollars, but um, anyway, so we, we've been informed that we've been awarded that money, um.
What, what is our intention, composition for that?
With the tennis courts part of that one?
We tried to, we put in an amendment to include tennis courts, and what I think that they're doing is they're going through and making the primary awards, and then they'll tell us if we get the amendment.
Okay.
Are we gonna do anything to prevent all that flooding over there, or like, is there any way to, I mean, because that is getting worse and worse, and.
I mean, that's not necessarily a bad thing, well, that's.
That's a good move.
I mean, I mean.
No.
The, the playing fields and the, you know, those are the areas that flood, you know?
Oh, right, I was just marketing the tennis courts.
I mean, that too, that's, they were built on a weapon.
Yep.
I mean.
I guess I was thinking about the wisdom of investing.
I don't think twice, but I, we were very much pushed to do this by uh, the Land and Water Conservation Fund people, because the guy down back who administers the program came to the Snow Bowl, the mountain bike, and he said, I noticed your tennis courts are in really bad condition, and, you know, we fund projects to.
He volunteered.
Upgrade the infrastructure that we originally funded, so even though they're in a really bad location.
Yeah.
On a, on a wetland.
Yeah.
Built on a wetland in the seventies, when you could do that, um, they're recommending we double down and keep them there, so.
It might be good to back that as part of the flood plain, or even, you know, like a.
That's not where you would ever build tennis courts if you really do it again.
Maybe we'll just put the tennis court in the tan, I mean.
Maybe, that's, uh, let's move on.
Okay, so anyway, um.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Um, and I guess to, you know, to that end, to stick onto that property, um, the Economic Development Administration has created a whole new grant program, it's the, and this is all with um, the American Recovery Act funds from the Biden administration, and there, this whole um, grant category is focused, focused on um, tourism, outdoor recreation, and there's, I forget what the other thing was, so. Prior to this grant program existing, it was a real stretch to say something like the lodge in the snow hole was.
Right.
A project that would be, the, the E D A just was never going to fund the project that did, you know, develop the lodge out of the snow bowl, but they, under this grant program, it's a very appealing project to them, one, because of the lodge, and two, because of the idea of having sort of like a regional um, multi-use trail facility that this serves as sort of like the trailhead and the entrance to.
Right.
Um, so we've got, we're working with the Midco's Economic Development District to put together an application, and we're also waiting, hopefully, with the foundation, pretty soon, about a potential match for that grant, and I think it's, we have a very, it's a, you know, kind of a one-time opportunity.
That's the one, it's the big one.
It's a big one, could potentially be like a multimillion dollar grant.
Which lodge are we gonna say that we wanna build?
Well, that's part of the discussion we need to have with the foundation, because.
Okay, let me make sure that it doesn't, like, defend that as part of them.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I don't think that, I, I think that construction costs being what they are now, we're gonna have to be creative and think about how we can do this as cost effectively as possible.
Negative facility, making it a snow bowl, right among the destination problems, so.
Well, and also another, this is something that's talked about a lot in the state of Maine's event center, so don't be surprised if this is sort of packaged as an event center.
I feel like we knew that.
Yeah, all of Maine does, there's, it's a huge.
At losing point, look, that was like a huge problem.
Yeah.
They have, you know, that one, that's great.
So anyway, it's a, it's a great opportunity, not just for Camden, but for the entire region, and that's one of the reasons why it's so appealing.
Thanks, Andre, that's good business.
Oh, wait, wait.
When you got a happy move.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that, I'll do that, I'll do that.
All right. Just be careful.
All right.
Do you know what you're gonna say?
I don't know.
Oh. Are we ready? I would like to make a motion to adjourn the select board for this evening.
And, and wastewater. Oh, please.
And private systems.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, so, I'm just, I just got started.
Although it's a favor.
Oh, Allison's not raising her hand.
Three to one, two, three, four, four zero. Thank you, Bruce, thanks, Bruce.
No, I didn't, I didn't vote that. No, I never, I'm. I abstained, yeah.
Four zero one, one, three, three, zero, one. Oh.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead.
Have a good day.
New desk, the new desk.
Yeah, thank you.